And this is after reviewing anything that we recommend to them. I think it'll be a function of comments that boards and commissions have submitted, and certainly comments from the public. So, I believe that going out with another first reading would allow a number of important details to be addressed that we've all kind of come across as we've reviewed this issue. And I think it would also provide an opportunity, further opportunity, for residents to provide additional input. So, as far as tonight, I hope we can reach consensus on a number of key metrics. That would include things like lot coverage setbacks, step backs, building height, and limits on impervious coverage, to name a few. And also, I hope that we can discuss and achieve an understanding of by right uses, and review the results of any potential consolidation of properties. So, that's all I had, just as a way of getting started. Andrea, would you like to go next?
I will go next. It's a hard act to follow. Tim, I don't have any prepared remarks, but I agree with you. No surprise, I think you and I agree on a lot of things here. I also support council's goals of encouraging denser housing, some more additional housing types, and hopefully, a wider range of price points of housing in T-zones. I also, you know, would like to see some development of the underutilized properties that we have there. And I also think it would be a good thing to have neighborhood-serving commercial uses in those areas. So, I do support the idea of bringing things like bakeries and bookstores and barber shops, you know, and restaurants to those areas, with council, you know, oversight, I think, on what the, those would be larger developments. And so, yeah, those are my thoughts at this point, and I also agree that it makes sense to share our comments with council, and look for another first reading.
Okay. Derek, would you like to jump in?
There's no way I can keep it to one minute, though, but I'll try. So, I would say that I really like that this has morphed and changed over time. I mean, it started with eighty percent lot coverage, now it's moving to sixty, so it's less dense. Also, we heard a lot of concerns about the step back and blocking people's views. So, we've now moved the proposal from ten to twenty. So, I think that, you know, moving it back hopefully will open up views, or at least not block views as much as the original proposal. And also, I want to thank staff for the fiscal impact analysis. That is something that I consistently asked for, and we finally got it. And I think we need to chew on it a little bit, because it's pretty substantial what the fiscal impact is going to be. If you kind of break it down, you know, we're looking, well, one, we should know that we might be getting missing middle, but we are not getting any affordable housing. The estimation is that these townhomes will go for eight hundred thousand apiece. That's a lot of money for a townhome. The first townhome I moved to in Alexandria cost five hundred thousand, and that was a stretch for our family at the time. There's no way we'd ever be able to afford an eight hundred thousand dollar townhome, at least at the time, when we were looking to purchase, which was many years ago. But nonetheless, you know, if we're thinking about opening up a new housing structure and trying to get a more diverse population, we're going to get a very affluent population. Maybe a little less affluent than what's here now, but still very affluent. So, we may be addressing missing middle housing structures, but we are not addressing affordable housing. So, the other thing that we are doing, which I think there's a good amount of agreement on, is that we are getting economic development, potentially. But let's just look at how much. So, potentially, we're getting an additional six million dollars per acre in value, which now you've got to times that times thirty, because there's thirty acres we're talking about. So, potentially, we're talking about a hundred and eighty million dollars in new value. That's taxable, if this was all built out. And that's a big if. But when it is, that's a lot of money. So, I would hope that we would be thinking about how to utilize that money. So, a hundred and eighty million times our tax, we're at least at eighteen million dollars, and we're over that. So, I said at the last meeting that one of the proposals should be that we take some of this additional tax money that is due to the zoning change that we are proposing, and we ask for it to be allocated for truly affordable housing. So, I want to know, can we get greater economic development? Can we address the missing middle? And can we also get some affordable housing units? To get all three things of those things, we need to change and augment what is on the books right now for this proposal. If we get all of those things, I will support this. Without any additional movement and proposals related to the additional tax revenue being allocated for truly affordable housing, without that, this is off the table for me, and I will not support this. Because I just feel like we have the potential to do equitable development, not just economic development. And I think it would be a big missed opportunity if we don't try to get all three of these things within this proposal. So, again, just to reiterate the thing that I'm really pushing us to do, is think about at least eighteen million dollars per year that is going to be available in our tax coffers, and get a proportion of that allocated to our affordable housing trust fund, so that we can utilize it to build really affordable housing for fifty, people who make fifty percent of AMI and under. And it does, I originally said I wanted it to be in these T-zones. I realized that that might be very difficult to do affordable housing in these T-zones. So, if we could just have that money for affordable housing somewhere in Falls Church, that would be good enough for me. But I think it's really important that we do. We've got the fields coming up. We've got a lot of parcels that we need to inject equity to keep them affordable. If we don't do this, we're going to be losing even more affordable housing going forward. So, I know that was over a minute. I apologize for going so long, but thank you for giving me the time.
Brent, you want to go?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I think the point of tonight is for us to, you know, have more of a conversation. But as far as like my starting point, sort of where I'm at, I mean, one thing that's been really important to me, and I'll approach it, you know, more from like a kind of a built environment form, urban design form aspect that I don't think has still been addressed. Now, I probably sound like a broken record, because I think I've said this since the first time we looked at it. I still really strongly believe that the Park Avenue portion of the T-zones needs to be treated differently than the other T-zone areas. I mean, to the extent there's any other concentration on North Washington. I've said it many times, I think that the condition there and the context is so distinct from the other areas where we have T-zones, that it really does call for a different treatment, both with respect to the bulk standards that we're talking about, but also the uses. I mean, I think that I would be okay with, again, just focusing on residential only on that portion, you know, where we have those existing concentration of T-zones along Park, you know, and probably townhouses or stacked townhouses, duplexes, I mean, that type of scale. And I really think that that is, I'm still, it's still missing from here. I mean, we're still looking at all the T-zones as one zoning district, which I just don't know if it lends itself to that as neatly as we might hope. So, that's something I feel strongly about. I don't see that in here yet, and maybe we can talk about that. I'm okay with a dedicated housing, affordable housing kind of funding stream, if there's some way to do that, through developments, through a special permit process. We'll have to talk about the mechanism that could yield something like that, but I'm certainly okay with that idea. I'm also concerned, and this is, I don't know if it's a problem we can solve, it's more, you know, we have to give it back to council, but I've also felt from the beginning that there's, you know, we're kind of missing comp plan guidance here. And so, without that, there's a vacuum of comp plan guidance on what, you know, what's called for, you know. And so, we're kind of doing this backwards. We're coming up with like development guidelines and zoning district, zoning district regulations, without a goal of what the comp plan, you know, sort of tells us. And I say us, I mean, the community, you know, through, you know, what the community wants to see there, which is what a comp plan is supposed to do. You know, supposed to have done that already, and build the consensus on what the bigger-picture vision is, and then we implement it through the ordinance. And so, we're kind of doing that backwards. We're kind of trying to make policy through the zoning ordinance, which is not a great way to make policy. So, that's a bigger-picture concern I've had with the whole thing. Obviously, we can't solve that directly from where we sit, but we could certainly, you know, convey that to council. But at a minimum, I'd like, they're going to, you know, think about ways they reevaluate this and send it back out. You know, I do think they need to look very carefully at that park versus the other areas. So, and you know, there are a lot more details in there, but I guess we'll talk about that tonight as far as some of the nitty-gritty. But that's kind of where I am, big picture. I could see myself supporting something here to send back to council, but certainly not in its current form. I mean, I think, you know, but I would like to give them something usable and useful that they can take and actually do something with. I do think there's merit in the overall idea of amending the T-zone regulations, but I just, you know, I think the problem is that we don't really have a compass that's guiding us on where we should be going.
Okay. Thanks. Rob, you want to jump in?
Thank you. I think that this has gone a long, this has certainly come a long way. I agree with the other commissioners. I think some of it's gone too far. I mean, I think some of the things around parking bother me a little bit that I still want to talk about. I actually had more questions than opinions coming into this meeting, things around the HCC that I quite understand how that's going to play out. So, there's some things I wanted, some clarification on. But, and I know there's a lot we don't know about what's going to happen here in this, in these areas. I mean, one thing I do know is that if we don't do anything, nothing's going to happen in these areas, right? So, I think the desire for a healthy, vibrant city is a very strong desire for that. So, the form it takes, I think we can work around some of the edges. I'm actually surprised to hear about your comments on the comp plan. I thought that it was, I actually looked at the comp plan and thought that it was, was pretty consistent with all of that. You know, the future land use map talks about mixed use here. I don't think the only way we're going to, that the only thing in a transition zone should be single-family housing or fallow land like we have now. I think you can have something that is vibrant and useful, and also serve as a transition. So, some things there I still want to talk about. I'm really glad to hear your comments, Derek, on the financing. I was hoping that this is what we're going to do tonight, is talk, because I knew you had some ideas about that, and I'd love to be able to figure out something that is workable around that. But again, I think this is all moving really in, very much in the right direction. There's still some things I want to get clarity on, but I do want to do something.
I also am coming into this with a lot of questions. I think more questions maybe than strong, strongly held positions at this point in time, although I've heard a lot that I agree with right now. I guess a couple of questions or thoughts I've had are, like, my first question is, I think one of the last requests we had at the last meeting is, can we please hear from developers? Because that's a key piece of information that I'd really like to understand. What's possible? What's the impact of this? I don't have enough information to really judge the impact of this proposal yet. And like, all I know is that the current T-zone is not working. That's not working. I don't think we're seeing what we want in these, in some of these areas. So, I would still really love to hear from developers. You know, I saw a lot of public comments, and we heard public comments about intention. What is the purpose of this? And I thought, oh, that's really simple. We know what the purpose is. And then I looked for it, and I thought, actually, it's a little harder to find that objective statement than I think it should be. I think the closest, because my question has been, is this about housing? Is it about commercial? Is it about all of the above? Is it about affordable? Is it about any kind of housing? What are we actually solving for? And I think the best statement I have found has been on line four seventy-three of the staff report, which is the beginning of the ordinance, the amended ordinance. And I'll just read it. "The T transitional district is intended to provide for transitions in building heights and density of use between commercial districts and residential districts, provide for a variety in building use, including both commercial and residential, and add to the diversity of commercial spaces and housing types." So, that was kind of the best thing I could hang on to, that this isn't all about one thing or the other. It's not solely about affordability. It's about diversity. I think we've had lots of conversations that whatever happens in this isn't going to move the needle dramatically one way or the other for affordable. It's more how we think sort of holistically about our overall affordable housing policy. So, when I come back to that, my next question is, you know, first of all, what are the criteria by which we should evaluate proposed zoning ordinances? I'm still unclear fully about that, you know, decision-making. And then I sort of got to, okay, well, let's, what I would really like to do, if we can, I don't know what boarding or questions really means, if it's like whiteboarding or whatever. Like, I would really like to go through a series of use cases to really specifically look at specific possible examples of development that might occur in the T-zones, and ask ourselves three questions about each of those use cases. Is it permissible? Is it likely? Is it strategic? And to unpack those things a little bit, to me, it's, is it permissible under the current T-zone, under the proposed ordinance? Is it permissible by right or especially with permit? Is it likely? That's something I'd really like to hear from developers. I don't know what's likely. Andrea and I have been joking about four-story bakeries, which, you know, might be really interesting, but probably unlikely. And then, is it strategic? I was looking, is it aligned with the comprehensive plan? And I spent some time looking through the small area plans in these areas, which, a little bit old, right? I think the one covering Broad Street, which covers, you know, the Park Avenue piece is from 2000. So, anyway, so like, that's, like, I just want to understand better the potential impact of this by going through some of these use cases, and then measuring that up against, are we designing for what we want? And are we clear on what we want?
Okay. All right. Opening round is, oh, Sharon. Please, if you have something you want to share.
But I, you know, in my few days that I've been crash courseing and kind of piecey together, I think I've read a lot of what I'm hearing. I don't have that information yet to completely formulate an opinion one way more heartily or the other. But I do think that we do need to address more, I mean, I understand that it's, you know, affordability issue isn't really, we're kind of punching that down the road, right? We're saying we've got, you know, additional housing types and a diversity of housing types, but it's really just in form. It's not a full diversity of that. So, I think it's important to think about that, and I appreciate the commentary on the financial portion of that, to really make us think about how are we going to bake that in? If we're going to bake it in and punch it down the road, how are we actually going to get that out if it's just punted ever? Exactly. The other thing I'm looking at is, you know, the diversity of this, what is happening down Broad Street versus what is happening down Park. And I don't, I agree with Mr. President, that you can't treat folks to the same exact way. So, it might be, you know, one has a different, a different approach than the other one has scaled down. But I also think we really have to think about stormwater. And I don't think it's really addressed. I think there are some things in there that say it can meet what's existing. But I think we really have to have the stormwater addressing to better, a lot better, because we are, you know, we are in climate change where we are seeing super-sized storms. We are seeing flooding really impacting neighbors and ourselves. So, I think it's really important that we really take a good, hard look and have the engineers also look at it and see, how can we do better and fill that? How does that project out across the development of these?
Great.
Mr. Chair, if I could interject for a moment. We're hearing from some folks that online, I think they're having some trouble with the audio. The, and I know we've got maybe some bad mics here. We've actually got an extra if you want to send this down the table. But I think it's been a while since we've been in this room. But just a reminder, and I think folks have generally been doing it, and I don't even know if this is part of the problem, just a reminder to make sure you activate the mic when you're using it.
The light on. Yeah.
I think most folks have been doing it, so I think it's something else. So, our meetings coordinator, as well as FCC TV, are trying to fix that.
Hopefully, our recording is functioning properly.
Right. Well, we've always got notes. But yes, it would be nicer to have the recording. Stall long enough, and it gets fixed.
Okay. All right. So, Paul, I think we're at the point where the idea was to board subjects, and then we can come back and kind of do a dive into each of those subject matters, and give folks a chance to ask questions, and see what kind of answers we can get, both from you, I think you'll probably providing most of it, but just other thoughts from other commissioners as well.
Sure. And I've obviously been taking notes as we go. And so, what I thought I might actually do is just sort of populate the board with the topics I heard, and I'll call them out here, and obviously, we'll be adding as we write them. But I heard, in order, building scale, uses, affordable housing, Park Avenue, purpose, use cases, and stormwater. So, if you like, I can start by populating the list with those topics, and then obviously I'll have the pen, and we can add more.
Yep. Go right ahead.
Right. Well, I mean-
We'll add to it.
Yeah. I mean, to elaborate on that, I mean, I know, I didn't mean to say the comp plan doesn't address this area. No, it does, but you know, it's very broad, brush is mixed use, and the type of changes we're talking about, just, we're not detailed in the comp plan, in my opinion, in a clear way, other than, you know, it says it should be like what's on Broad Street, but that's not really what we're talking about.
What would you expect? What kind of fairness?
Well, I mean, something more specific about the treatment that we want to see, you know, I'm sorry. Just didn't do what Paul told us to do.
Staff doesn't tell any questions.
I mean, in the sense that right now, it's talking, I mean, I really feel like the small area plans are focusing on larger mixed use, you know, consolidation into larger mixed use projects, ala what happened, you know, Founders Row, that spans the full width of Park, Broad to Park. But in these areas of T's, at least, you know, on the Park Avenue portion, you know, the lots typically are not going, they don't span that. Even with consolidation, they're not going to do that. And I don't, it doesn't seem like the comp plan, you know, what's come from council as far as this, you know, the whole idea of this T-zone, I mean, I don't see anything in the small area plan that talks about, you know, missing middle, and talking about that aspect of it. So, that's all I meant to say. I'm not saying it's completely, there's no guidance whatsoever. I mean, you know, we do have an adopted map and plans, but I'm just saying, you know, the message that kind of came or was telegraphed through, what council referred out, didn't seem to sync up with it as well as I would have normally expected to see, in my opinion. Like, it did, you know, when we looked at these other mixed use projects, I don't think we've ever questioned sort of the comp plan. Like, when we've evaluated, you know, Broad and Washington, we've evaluated Founders Row one, and, you know, I was near from one, but number, Founders Row two, I think on those projects, I mean, it was very clear that we felt that it was consistent. Whereas this proposed change to the ordinance, which typically would be implementing the comp plan, just doesn't seem to be, I just don't see enough of the, you know, that it's backed up as much as I would like it to by the comp plan. So, that's just my, the way I've read it, unless I'm missing something in there that, you know, gets to that. But when, you know, as far as the small area plan goes, I just don't think it addresses what we're trying to do, or what we sort of think we were told to do with the T-zones.
I think, when I think of like, there's the, there's the small area plans, and there's also the chapters of the comprehensive plan, and the housing chapter, which we just updated. I just brought that up, because the vision is create and maintain a diverse supply of housing that supports an inclusive and welcoming community as the region continues to grow, work proactively to ensure affordable housing keeps pace with population increases, and is available for a range of incomes, household sizes, generations, and needs. And to me, like, I think that some of what I'd like to see happen in transition zones is providing that diversity of housing types for people of all different ages. You know, I'd like to see like accessibility requirements, potentially. That's something that we had talked about previously. So, we have like some percentage of units that are, use universal design criteria, so people can age in place in the community and downsize. Like, that's, and I think that is supported, you know, in some of the chapters of the plan. But I think you're right, that the small area plan for T-zones, and it's, I reviewed that too, and it struck me as very abroad and a very large and different, differing area, too. So, I think you're right about that. But when you think about the places where you could have those kinds of small developments, you know, the T-zones are a natural fit.
Yes, the one thing I would add, Rob, is I think about your question and Brent's reply, is that, you know, the comp plan and small area plans do discuss transition zones and their role. So, I guess my guidance on that was that, to the degree that we start changing the rules, that it kind of has to stay within the spirit of what is there now. If we want to go beyond that, and I guess in my view, what the council came out with in terms of the first reading, because of opening the spigot, as I call it, and making it a lot more desirable for economic development, it begins to, in my mind, mold out of that role of the little bit of transition that is discussed in the comp plan. So, that's as much as I got out of it. I don't disagree with anything Brent said, though, that ideally, in an ideal world, we'd start out with changing the comprehensive plan, have the public discussion input, all of that take place, clear goals, you know, so all of that is stated, and then move into the zoning code. If you do try to do it backward, as we've kind of done it here, it obviously, you know, raises a number of challenges. I don't know.
How about the future ratings that has mixed use? So, it's not changing the rules, it's what is.
Right. That's just kind of where the city thinks it would like to go. It would have to implement rules to make that happen, obviously, including zoning rules at some point, presumably.
Pardon?
Yeah. But I mean, as far as an example of, you know, hey, the first thing to do is change the future land use map, and then come back and start to craft rules? Is that what you meant, or maybe something a little different?
Well, but the mixed, and the mixed use designation, I think, you know, I understand your question, but I think that the mixed use, the mixed use designation that's on there now, I don't know, you know, the kind of things we're talking about, you know, I don't know if that really fits mixed use. I mean, in the sense of what that, we've taken that to mean on the land use map, and that's the same category that's applied to our most intense mixed use projects, you know, multifamily with, you know, ground floor retail typically. And so, I don't think that's what we're talking about here. So, I mean, in that sense, I just think that, right, it's try, it's sort of, it's kind of a policy direction from council, and, you know, obviously, they have, they have an intent in mind with this change, what they want to see. But, you know, I just was looking for a stronger link to the comp plan to back it up. And that's what I just, I still feel that, that's missing to some degree. Not that there's no support for these ideas. I mean, there are big, all the big-picture policy stuff we're talking about, you can find, find that in the plan. But when we're looking at these targeted areas, I mean, I think that's where, you know, I just, I think it's, we're missing it. But I mean, you know, we, in our role, I think we, you know, we're kind of dealt the card, we have the cards, we're going to play the cards we're dealt, and give back to council our suggestions and recommendations based on that. And I guess, you know, perhaps they'll consider the comp plan changes. But if not, you know, if they're going to, you know, look at changing the ordinance, I mean, I think we, you know, need to look at things that can, that are more in line, as Tim said, with what's there today. Because if you go too far out from that, you know, again, you're kind of like, you're building a, like a, you're building like a pier, and you've, without any supports under it, and at some point, it falls. So, anyhow, so that's, yeah, that's what I was getting at.
Okay. Should we maybe see if we want to add anything to the list there? I can certainly start out. You have uses, and one of the things that I want to talk about this evening is the by right uses that are currently in the council proposal and the staff additions.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm running out of-
Want to put them up here, Paul?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. Put them up in this corner.
Sure.
I like your little banner.
I took a training, actually. When you talk about the importance of banners and boxes, so I practiced a little bit.
I took a training actually, when you talked about the importance of banners and boxes, so, I practiced a little bit.
Okay, so the one I had was clarification of the existing by right uses.
Can we add another one, do you want?
Add that, or?
Oh, yeah.
Memory man. Because what we're gonna do, I think, is after we're done adding topics, then we'll just go back, go through them, and ask our questions or make our comments.
To me, like, that's, that, the purpose in the comp plan, is like, direct link to what's by right and what's goes to special use.
Right.
Mapping those things together. We want more housing, let's make it easy, that's not what this is about.
That's kind of the broader issue, what I had in mind is just very specific things that are there, and just asking some questions about it to clarify what it is, but I, you know, somebody else want to add? I've got some more, but I'm.
My question's a more specific, about some of the changes that were in here, around parking and the H C C, I just didn't, just want some clarification, I don't know if they're, they rise to the level of these big topics. The historic, cultural conservation.
Um, I have a question about the one acre threshold.
I have a question on the S U P process, try to flush that out. Speak up, as people have, I've got some more.
We can only add more, I, I got my whole box of markers.
I've got questions from the staff, this, the staff report, I don't know if you want me to just put that in as.
Oh, sure. Sure.
And you don't have to write this down, but just as an example, what's meant by no residential uses north of Great Falls or North Washington, be good to get your kind of expert interpretation of what that means. There's some others in there too, but that one jumped out.
I took some leeway, I emerged at sort of the Park Ave discussion, because it gets to, I think, sort of different areas of the city, and what's, what's the structure.
Right.
You mentioned setbacks.
Yeah, we've got.
Scale, yeah, I was gonna ask the same question, we talk about that when we talk about scale.
A few others, but they all fit under that, I think. Are we, uh, ready to s- start going into the individual topics?
Yeah, where do we start?
Scale.
Scale, that, that's okay, you want to start there? Um, well, the one we, that's in the plan already is the rear yard setback, which I guess the, the thing that, that struck me is really worthy of having, being pointed out, is under the current code, somebody could build a parking lot and, and put it right up on the property line, under today's rules. And under what we're talking about here, you know, we're saying at a minimum, there has to be 20 feet on that rear yard setback. So, you know, that's an improvement, I guess depending on your perspective, but I think it's an improvement over what's in the existing code today.
I think somebody could actually build a three-story, 45-foot office building by right today, in the T-zones, with no setback.
Am I right, Paul, any of the by right uses, other than the housing options, could go right up to the property line at the maximum height that's allowed?
Yeah, Mr. Trainer, I think you're going forward, it's the, the comparison table of, of what can be done today. So actually, Mr. Trainer, I think you actually assembled this table, so maybe I'll flip it over to you. If you can walk through sort of what's allowable in T-zones, how does that relate to sort of setbacks? And then, I think that table might have been the, oh, you've got an even better table. I'll let you, I'll let you do it.
Yeah, so this, this is the table comparing setback in heights with, with T-zones as councils referred them, and then in the staff report, we have kind of as, as they are today. But, yeah, there, for, for B1 and, and, and T-zones as they are today, there's no rear setback unless they abut a residential district.
Right.
Was that in your other table, can you go back to the one in the staff report, actually?
Yeah. Let me keep this one open as another tab.
Yeah, so it's that, that T1, all other uses, and T2, all other uses. You can see that rear setback requirement is none unless footnote one is met, and that's the adjacency to, to R1A, R1B. And so, sort of the question was, was correct, that in all commercial building could be built on the lot line to the maximum allowable height of 45 feet.
Can I just jump in with a few use cases here? Because here's where, it's like, we have to look at it in totality, obviously, that very attractive lack of setback is not enticing a lot of development here, right? And I have a feeling there's a bunch of things going on that drives that, one of which might be lot coverage, right? One of which might be the fact that you can only build three stories, maybe, you know, the, the new proposed ordinance is four stories. So whether it's 60% or 80%, there's still, I think, more space, it's hard for me to do the math here in the abstract, but at the very least, with four stories, you've got more leasable space, so maybe it's more attractive. And so that's why I want, like, I really think we have to unpack scale, lot size, in the context of all other uses, right? And, and is this, and, and marry that up with what are developers actually gonna do? Because if we're putting together some algebra here, that's gonna lead to continued lack of development, or gangbusters development, that doesn't match what our 2012 small area plan tells us we want, we want, in our, in our, that there's just, I don't know, it, it, it's, I don't, it's hard to sort of process this, I think. And so, can I, can I, I, I would just love to list my use cases, and then just shut up, because then the scale and the likelihood matters, and I think in that more context, right?
So, so you want to leave for scale and go to?
Well, I think it's like, the scale of what, right?
Yeah.
So scale will be all other uses, like, we have parking lots.
I get your frustration, but I guess you, you build a building a brick at a time, right? So you kind of have to.
We've got parking lots that are available now, right? So, so they're not being built, right? But if we think in the context of them.
Well, there's one behind the hotel there, that's right on Park Avenue.
The garage for the hotel, yeah.
Right.
To me, I mean, I think the big difference here is that we're, we would be allowing residential, which is what the market wants to build. So nothing's being built, because nobody wants to build office, nobody wants to build commercial, they want to build residential. So you would get things built if you allow residential to be built. So what would we want it to look like? If we allow residential, what do you want that building form to look like? What do you want the setbacks to be, how big do you want it to be, right? Like, I think if you allow residential, you're gonna get it, so what, how do we want it to, what, do we want, how do we want it to be?
So can we talk about like two examples, a four-story, commercial only?
What is that, though? I just don't know what that, I like.
Offices, dental, medical, I don't really.
The offices can be built today, and nobody's building them.
Nobody's building them. My question to developers is, does this lot, does the scale configuration, the lot configuration, and the four stories make it more likely?
Yeah, I don't, that might be a question for staff to ask the developers' community, I don't know.
Because what I'm hearing from some of the public concern, public comments is, we're allowing a whole bunch of stuff by right, where there's a lot of stuff that's already allowed by, by right, parking lots, offices, boarding houses, ands, you know, I've got the list, it's not being built, because something about this zoning is not making that a possibility. In addition to the current law, so there's a lot of factors. Do these changed configurations alone, the new scale and the new lot configuration, is there something about that alone, that would allow those currently allowed by right uses to, to start happening? And these commercial only, or like, could you have a three-story building, three-story office? Three-story, commercial-only building, ground floor, restaurant, top two floors are more dental offices, right? Because that seems to be by right, and so what does that scale look like? Is that gonna happen? And then more likely, we have a three-story building, that's like ground floor bakery, and then two floors apartments, right? And so what does the scale, does this configuration allow for more of that? And so to me, like, scale and the absence of use is hard to prospect, that's what we're trying to get at, right?
Is it logistically legal? Like, is it just, or?
Is it likely, so, is it feasible? Right, let's, let's talk about, let's talk about the use case of ground floor restaurant, bookstore, something wonderful, and two floors of, but let's, let's talk about three, three stories above that of apartments. Is that?
So, none of the above, like, could, today, none of that could be?
Today, none of that would happen.
Correct.
And the next, the next, and then, in the new ordinance, it would.
Maybe, I think it would probably be all residential.
Permissible, is it permissible?
I had to guess.
It's under an acre, right?
Under an acre.
Yeah. So you can have the special use permit process.
So if somebody wanted to take the 1.6 acre zone on Park, and buy that whole thing, and put mixed use apartments and bakeries or restaurants.
They're under the special exception rezoned to be.
Then it has to be, has to be rezoned.
And I think the market just doesn't want to build that, I think right now, I mean, developers couldn't probably get financing to do that on Park, because you don't have the, you know, the tri- you know, trips passing by, you know, retail's so fickle, and it's also a very difficult landscape these days. I mean, essentially what happened, we see it, I mean, this is true all throughout the region, I mean, it's the, the apartments are essentially subsidizing some of the ground floor retail, and so that's what you would see, I mean, at best, I mean, it'd be mostly multi fam- I mean, they could, they, they'd probably, there'd be an appetite for, you know, more apartments, but probably not for a lot of, not for office, I mean, a spec office, I can't remember the last time I saw a spec office building get built anywhere around here. And so, I think that's the challenge, I mean, the market, you know, for that, those types of uses, especially on a street like Park, I think is gonna be limited, no, on North Washington, I think perhaps, you know, but, although even there, the retail landscape is tough. You know, we see that, you know, work going on at, on Broad too, at, at Founders Row, so I think that's the difficult thing, you know, I, but I think as far as, well, I mean, again, it gets, I sound like a broken record, but we're, you know, without sort of stronger guidance as far as like what we want to do. Right now, the comp plan map says mixed use, is mixed use really achievable, you know, on Park, for lots that are just fronting on Park, not lots that go through, you know, that are just, you know, consolidating just the exist, some of the existing lots that are only on Park, or on some of the other str- you know, side streets, you know, I, I, I don't know. And so, you know, again, we're being tasked with trying to craft an ordinance that, you know, we already know is the comp plan, but, I mean, I think the market wants to build townhouses there, and that's not a bad thing, you know, there are other, especially if we could achieve other goals, you know, of like affordable housing and or, you know, providing housing types, you know, in a different income strata, but, um, but yeah, so I, I don't know, I mean, again, it's, it's, it's hard to, I mean, I, I just think I said this in one of the earlier meetings, I mean, there's so few T-zones, we could almost take each site one by one and try to, you know, we could certainly, you know, kind of look at like, oh, do an exercise and see what might fit on that lot, and what makes sense. And it also kind of speaks to why, at, at minimum, a special permit process, if not, you know, more robust process is probably, kind of, it's also probably a good idea, you know, on these projects, but, but yeah, I think it's hard to come up with some of these ideas, and, and, you know, they're, you know, I, I just think some of them are just not realistic, to think that there's gonna be a lot of non-residential on, on some of those lots, that there'll be an appetite for it.
Guess the assumption at the moment is assuming, for the moment, and you're kind of pushing back on this, but if you could, assume that you've got to build a, a project that is, you know, is gonna come forward, okay? With that, are you, are you okay with, you know, setback 20 foot in the rear, with total coverage at 60% rather than 80%, with three stories facing the street, with a, a step back, you know, to allow fourth story? So I guess that's the, the question now, realizing that you'd have to come back and answer your higher level question, which is, will this even get built at this point?
What and where?
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
What is it? And where is it being built? Which, which of our T-zones, is Park, is it North Washington? Right, so, I mean, I, I, sure, that looks good to me. But, I mean, if we think about the 1.6 acre lot, zone on, on Park Avenue, just very specifically, here's, here's my question. It's a 1.6 acre T-zone on the map, with the proposed, let's say, if hypothetically, somebody thought it would be amazing to take that lot and build only commercial on it, only commercial, four stories, ground floor, yeah, some amazing maker space, ground floor, bookstores, bakeries, restaurants, so great, bunch of dental offices, is that permissible by right under this T-zone if it's over an acre? This is where like my acre question, it is permissible?
Well, it's, it's permissible now, in the sense that someone could, if someone bought that land, they could consolidate it, they could develop it under a site plan today, and at 40% lot coverage, and they could stick a parking lot on the other 60%, they could, they could stick nothing but dental, I, I, they could.
So can, can we just pull it up a little, so today?
Although I don't know that dental offices are allowed, so that the uses may limit what you can. Oh, sure, then.
It says, yeah, so, so today, you could have a 1.6 acres, like 40% of 1.6 acres, that's only office, you can't have the restaurant, right?
Correct.
You can't have the bakery.
Correct.
You cannot have the shoe store, the antique store, the barber shop, the neighborhood servant, office only.
Correct.
Can you be that rigid, though? I mean, even under today's rules, it may not be specified in the zoning, it's not say they couldn't come in and ask for it, and that the city would allow it.
What would it take?
But I think the question is what's allowable by right today.
By right.
Okay.
What's allowable by right?
One thing that may be helpful, this is a little bit different from what's by right today, but we, we do have sort of examples of, of what sort of doesn't work. They're in the, Mr. Trainer, if you could go to.
The two developments, the one on Spring Street.
Yeah, the ones that didn't, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I guess it's just my, just to pull that thread to the end of that point, the key to it is, it's allowable by right today, it's not happening. Does increasing the lot coverage and increasing the number of floors make it more likely? That's my question to developers, right?
So.
By right.
Sure, so what we've seen from development inquiries, right, people come into the, the planning shop, zoning shop, economic, and they, and they ask us, hey, I've got this land, or I want to consolidate this land, and I want to do this and that and the other thing. The stumbling blocks that they run into, number one is, so there are a couple of these, so these aren't in any particular order. I said number one, but I should have just said the point. One is the cost of parking, so surface parking is relatively inexpensive, right? It's five to $10,000 space. But then, depending on how much activity you've got in the building, and you're trying to find a way to park your project, suddenly you're looking at structured parking, and then there's just not enough building to make it work. It's, it's very inefficient to develop parking on a small lot, because you can't get double loaded drive aisles, and it, it just doesn't work out. So sometimes for a larger project, they're curtailed just by how much parking you can fit on there. And we've actually seen, that's, that's actually what's stalling a lot of the existing commercial uses, where people have successful businesses in there, and they want to expand, and they can't figure out how to meet the parking requirements for, for a larger building. So cost of parking is one, and the amount of required parking. And then the other is the land price, so when people think about, well, I want to buy a property, I'm a, I'm a small business owner, I want to have some space for myself, maybe some expansion space that I'll, you know, lease out for now, but in order to be able to buy the land and finance it, I need to be able to put residential in there. And that's certainly what. And that's certainly what the traditional homes proposal was about. It was gonna be their professional office space, their permanent home here in the city. And then to finance the project, they were gonna cover it with the, with the residential. And so I think people are, proposals are, are including a significant amount of residential, which often drives up the height. But they need that height because of the land prices. So I think something that also might happen here, and I think this would be beneficial, is maybe to reset the land prices. Because I think when developers look at the city, you've got by right and you've got the SE process. And if there's nothing in between those, then they assume that they're, they're comparable prices. Certainly the landowners are thinking their comparable prices are, are the SE projects. And that's what drives the projects to be as tall as they are.
But fundamentally, those two projects were attempted under the existing special exception approach and, and the traditional kind of rezoning. Whereas what, my sense of what council is trying to do here is to see if we could take these T zones and that area of the zoning code and see if we can tweak it in such a way as to allow more development, especially development that increasingly came to their attention, which is housing. And allow for that to occur under the T zone umbrella.
With a special use permit.
With a special use permit, that's right.
Yeah, I think what we've seen over time is through the SE process, typically if you sort of look at a trend line in sort of projects heights and bulks and acreages, that over time, as land prices have gone up, those projects have gotten larger. And so that, that was council's original direction to staff, was can you find an all residential option that would promote some of these smaller acreage projects? And so that's, that's why we did drop the height down from what you can otherwise get in an SE. That's why we did draw the lot coverage back from what you can get in otherwise in an SE. So that was the purpose here, was to try and drive out a smaller acreage project.
Paul, for everyone's benefit, could you, could you just re-view the special, how you guys envisioned this special permit process working on this? Because it's, just so everyone remembers what that is.
Sure, and the special use permit process exists in the zoning ordinance today, but it's not something that people are usually familiar with. I think today, the things that would go through there are daycare uses in our district. So there was a recent application to actually continue a daycare that's been operating in the scout house for some time, that had to go through an SUP. There's a whole lot of code related to how drive-throughs are regulated, that's done through the SUP. And then something that hasn't been used in, well, actually in decades. But if you want to do a taller building in a residential multifamily district, there are provisions for a special use permit. But a special use permit is something that's, that's enabled under, under Virginia zoning code. And it understands that it is not something that is strictly by right. So it's understood to be a, a use or a bulk that may put additional strain on neighbors or the neighborhood. And so as part of a special use process, the approving body, in this case would be council, can attach particular conditions to it. So whether that's, you know, where the drive aisles are located or what their loading hours can be, or how the lights can shine at different hours of the day. It's, it's, all those conditions are related to mitigating any impact on the neighbors or the neighborhood. Beyond what would otherwise be an impact from a by right development. So it's acknowledging that all development has some impact, but special use permit should not exceed what can be done by right. So what's up on the screen here, this is in the staff report. What's in the column on the, obviously the far left column is a tally of months. Middle column is the special exception process, far right column is, is potentially what a special use permit could look like for a T zone application. As with any application, it begins with a staff review through, through all of the disciplines. Planning, building safety, housing, engineering, including transportation as well as stormwater, city arborist. All those different specialties would look at it for consistency with local codes, state codes, federal codes. And then that would go to a first council work session approximately one month after the submittal. And then it would also go out, in the case of an SE, the planning commission has been hosting preliminary workshops with all boards and commissions. And then this is a little different here for an SUP, because it was council's direction to, to allow this for a smaller project, so the thought there would be fewer impacts. Send it out to the planning commission and the AAB for a preliminary workshop. And then we would proceed, typically SEs include a public walking tour. We've been on a few of those for founders, to the Broad and Washington proposal, the One City Center proposal. Going into month three, applicant would be expected to come in with a, a second resubmittal responding to everything they've heard so far from staff, council, boards and commissions, public. Another month of review, again by all the disciplines, go to a second council work session. And this is where the two processes start to diverge, so I'll just stick with the one on the far right for simplicity here. So the expectation is that, assuming that the responses from the applicant were acceptable to council, perhaps with some additional guidance, council would grant a first reading and a referral, which would go out specifically to the planning commission as well as the AAB, those groups would hold work sessions. Now we're into month six, if we go to the next page. Planning commission and AAB would be expected to make their recommendations back to council in that timeframe. And that would likely include some slip sheets, some modifications from the applicant in response to those groups. A clean submittal of all the changes made in response to boards and commissions. Another council work session, and of course, the, the planning commission action as well as the council actions would all be subjects of public hearing. And of course, all these things would be noticed on our city website. And then it'll be final, final council consideration by approximately one to eight. Now that, and I will say that's the fastest, you know, for the SE process where we charted that out, we presume sort of an eleven month process for, for special exceptions. But with recent projects, which been, what's been sort of more typical is sort of a year and a half to two years. So what's here is sort of the fastest the wheels of the review process can spin. But obviously, depending on the quality of the comments or, or the depth of the comments, that process often takes longer.
So the question I have is how much discretion will council have on the special use permit requests? You know, for example, to Brent's point early on about differentiating between Park Street and North Washington.
Sure.
Council be able to take a look at a project that is proposed for Park Avenue and say, well, you know, we agree with Mr. Krasner that it really should be more of a residential nature here and this particular project has some commercial in there, which we don't think is right, so we're not gonna allow this special use permit. Is that an example of discretion that they would have?
Yeah, so not, so no decision by a, by a, by a public body is supposed to be arbitrary and capricious, right? The idea is that you don't submit a, a permit one day and someone's, gosh, I really just don't like the font you used here, I just can't approve this project. So, so obviously there's supposed to be conditions and standards. Mr. Trainer, if you can go to line six, six, two?
By the way, I would never accuse council of being arbitrary and capricious.
No, I don't think they've ever done that. But obviously, these, so these are the considerations and I think we probably missed one here. Obviously consistency with the comp plan should probably be number one. But there are conditions that council would consider in, in considering any application for a special use permit and you would spell those out here. And obviously, there's some.
Right, I mean, the, the point is like if, if the ordinance allows it, people are gonna want to do it. So I mean, it's better to avoid that, you know, by not wasting anyone's time, by making it clear in the ordinance, well, clear in the comp plan and in the ordinance.
Right.
What you want to see, and that way you get applications that come in that attempt to provide that, you know, if they're, if they're feasible. And many people would, so you do, you wouldn't want to, I think, allow, if you're sure you don't want a certain type of use in a certain spot and you shouldn't, you know, and we're, and we're looking at it today, we shouldn't allow it.
And I should clarify also, so, and, and again, because this is an SUP, council could attach conditions to that approval. And then, and then the other thing I should point out is this, this is only one part of the entitlement process. So this is your zoning entitlement, but it's not actually a permission to, to, to build anything yet. You would still need a site plan and that's where the site engineering would be conducted, is stormwater, traffic analysis, lighting impacts, things of that nature. And then of course, you still need a building permit to make sure it's gonna be a safe structure. So this piece here is really related to the zoning and the use and the, the general shape of the building and then it would be the site plan where the detailed engineering would be worked out.
The other thing to highlight, if I understand correctly, is that the special use permit process allows for public input?
Yes, it does. As I said, there are multiple public hearings built into that process.
Right.
And, and as well as noticing requirement. So obviously, the intention is, right, none of this is supposed to be secret. And so that's, that's, that's one of the reasons why staff suggested the, the SUP process. The other reason for suggesting the SUP process, I'm, I'm jumping topics a little bit, but because it is a conditional use, that's why you can attach additional conditions, whether that's affordable housing or other things that are listed as, as sort of requirements.
And this is not new, this is not a commonly used process.
Correct, yeah, it's not commonly used in, in the sense that they, they sort of occur, but there's, some of them are approved by the BZA, some are approved by the council. Most of the SUPs that are applied for today, like daycares in a residential district, go before the BZA. Certainly those are advertised, but they, they don't draw a lot of attention.
We saw that, that came to us too, well, because that was a BZA, we review, we review BZA actions as, and make a recommendation to them, right?
Correct.
Sounds like we saw that, yeah.
So the things, the uses that would go under a special use permit, is anything residential, is that correct? So long as it is under one acre?
Yes.
Okay, and if it's over one acre, then?
Then no residential would be, under this code amendment, no residential will be allowed for projects over an acre. The, the motivation for that when it was drafted was that really this was supposed to be again, sort of smaller acreage projects. And so if you are getting into the bigger acreage project, then the thought in drafting this was that then the SE process is the right venue because there are boards and commissions involved and, and although both processes include public engagement, SE obviously includes more.
So if developers interested in a one point one acre mixed use development, then they would apply this gravitation zoning on the ordinance. Um, I guess my next question is, do we want more housing, do we want any of that? Do we want to acquire that special use permit, that, that puts those limitations? This is where I'm balancing against what's in this with small area plans, which say we want a mix of commercial and residential and new housing plan. And then the conversations we just had, we need to bring on like an additional two thousand ish households for the next decade, right? So do we want a slow roll? Houses or is there? Stuff there, is there, you know, is, is that what we want, special use? Like you could have large ish, all commercial by right, that's permissible, that might not be likely. But it might also not be what we want in the comp plan, but it could be permissible. And what's permissible now, if we don't come back and re-update these ordinance for another fifteen years or whatever, then do market conditions change? Are we just relying on market conditions to prevent something that we don't want? And are we making it too hard to get what we do?
Well, planning is always a moving target, I mean, I, I agree, we can't, can't always anticipate, you know, you do your best to, you know, be realistic. I mean, certainly, you know, there, there are many examples of, you know, zoning ordinances in comp plan, recommendations that, you know, turned out to not be realistic and were never able to be achieved. And so, I mean, ideally, we'd like to not do that, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I certainly, I mean, I think housing certainly is a, there, I think we've all identified that there's a, there's a housing shortage, housing shortage in the region is the housing shortage in Falls Church, you know, based on type, both type and, and based on affordability. And so there certainly is a market for that, I mean, and our, and our comp plan already speaks to that in other areas. So I mean, in that sense, I think it's, you know, there's a lot of support for that and it's realistic and it's, you know. And that's, but that's always been my problem with this is that, you know, there's been different terms tossed around, you know, as far as missing income, missing housing type, missing, what middle is missing? You know, I've heard many different, you know, thoughts on that, so. And you can't solve all those issues with our, the limited area in the T zones. But, yeah, I, I do think we do have to be careful about, you know, it's been planned for mixed use and that's not, as Paul highlighted, there are certain, certain issues where, reasons why that's not gonna happen, at least on Park, most likely. So if we're looking at changing it, I mean, I think ideally, we wouldn't, we don't want to waste, you know, go through this exercise and have nothing to show for it. So ideally, we would pick something that seems, at least based on the best information we have today. You know, you can't predict out twenty years in the future that well, but you know, in the next three to five years, you know, what seems reasonable that this might spur some activity that we, that we do want to see in those areas.
I think we see a lot of focus on commercial in our current plans because going back to the nineteen eighties, nineteen nineties, that's kind of what the city wanted, kind of viewed residential as, as carrying along costs that, right? Increased taxes and the way you solve that is kind of looking to what Arlington did with their very successful commercial development program. That's what the focus of the city was. The problem that I have with that today is that, just by everything I read, is that commercial retail has been overbuilt in the country. And if we try to force a lot of that here in areas where it's not, doesn't have good exposure, foot traffic and so forth, that we risk having a lot of empty storefronts. So that's one of several reasons why I'd kind of like to see as much residential development occur as possible. I think where you were going with this is, do we need to go back and tell council, you know, if this is what we want? Yeah, well, you, you've got to come up with the rules that very clearly, you know, incent that, that type of, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's a valid point to discuss, but any other?
Yeah, I mean, that's something that I want to talk about because the, the disallowing of any residential by right just doesn't sit well with me. And I do think it's appropriate for larger buildings to go through some sort of special use permit. But I would say that should apply to commercial buildings too, which I think is the point that you're making, Corey. Because if you're talking about a really large project, it is gonna impact the neighbors, then I think, you know, council should be able to have some oversight of that. But I do think smaller residential projects, things like triplexes or quads, like, you know, something that's more like bigger than, a little bigger than house scale, but not as big as like a small condo building, you know, could be built by right, potentially. I would, I would support that because I, I, I don't think it's right to remove any potential.
Something has to be by right, like just legally speaking, you've got to have at least some baseline that they, that someone, that a property owner can do. Well, it's got some use, whatever it is, you can't literally make it.
Well, there's lots of by right, yeah, including parking lots too, which actually is maybe one.
That list that's in there now, by right, whether somebody would accuse you of, of a taking if you just rely on that and don't have some housing in there, I don't know. That goes beyond my knowledge. But yeah, I, I tend to agree with that, I mean, if you can come up with something that, especially if it's no bigger than, let's say, a McMansion in our residential zones, kind of like a, a triplex or something like that, or a quad. If you can fit it so that it looks like a house and it fits in the neighborhood, that strikes me as a good candidate for by right. Now, that's not saying there won't be issues there, I'm sure a lot of people will be very concerned about, well, gee, you're gonna, if you have four units in that building, what about all the cars, where are you gonna put them? You know, are they gonna spill over, you know, you're gonna have those issues, stormwater, all of those things will continue to be there. But if you are gonna have a, a housing by right, that strikes me, if you pick something that's no worse than what we already allow in our residential.
Well, right now, you can have single family in T zones, all right, so.
With four cars, I'll just say.
Single family detached, right?
Not unusual.
Yeah, so, but I agree with that, that's probably the direction I would like to see, that some type, some smaller, you know, multifamily, whether it's a, right, a quad or whatever, you know, something like that.
Right.
Up, up to that level could, could happen by right.
Because then I think you're encouraging those smaller residential projects.
Right.
And the, the larger residential projects, which I would also support, you know, would, would go through an appropriate special use permit process. I think the trick is like, how do you keep those smaller projects more affordable, so they're not just luxury? And they are providing that diversity of housing types and price points. Maybe you do that with a quad, I don't know.
Well, it, it, yeah, it's really, the affordable housing issue is a tough one, but it strikes me, if you've got something that's the same size as a McMansion, McMansion, and you're putting in four units in that, if you think you can get the same price for each of those four as, you know, the single large house, I, you know, I just don't think that's gonna happen.
Unless you've got really nice finishes.
So you are getting a lower price for a smaller amount of space, I mean, that's basically.
Right, that, that would be the expectation.
Yeah, now, that by no means satisfies affordable housing, I'm, I'm not trying to say.
No, it doesn't, but it, it, it fits, yeah, yeah.
I think that's depressing about being clear about what we actually want.
Right.
And I see what you mean, the lack of clarity that's in the plane now, because we haven't really had that.
Some of the things are bank shots rather than explicit, I, I think that's a good point.
I think we just, I don't know, that feels pretty clear to me, right? As a proposal and a recommendation, we know we need more housing. We know that Park Avenue in particular is more residential. So he's tucked it up the Penn Zone, the Mizzou Lane, yes, it's more residential. So we allow by rights, smaller scale residential, that fits in the neighborhood and fits larger and let's go through the view. And then if we haven't, we should probably think about from Washington too, whether we're there because it's different.
Well, can you talk about the staff recommendation that was added, or Jack, sorry, to the staff report for the properties north of Great Falls?
Residential uses north of Great Falls, North Washington?
Because I think that might be related to your question, Corey.
I think he's a little bit wrong too about the different treaty.
Right, right.
Yeah, I think, I think that gets into the, the kind of larger parcel sizes right above Great Falls Street on, on, uh, North Washington. Versus, yeah, like further, further down, and those are a little harder to see. You have kind of smaller parcels that might, you know, be closer to that one acre in size, so encouraging, you know, kind of, you know, different developments north of, um, north of Great Falls Street, which is, is called out in the downtown small area plan too, is as that kind of boundary.
You're saying that all of those would just have to come in as, as rezoning requests?
Uh, under the current, um, uh, proposed, proposal, yeah. I mean, with the, with the one acre threshold, I mean, these are, these are all kind of larger.
But you said north of, of Great Falls, so you're seeing everything.
Yeah. North, north of Great Falls.
Yeah, so if you had something, let's say, less than an acre.
Yeah.
Like the 400 North Washington property, that's less than an acre.
This one, yeah.
Are you saying no residential uses? That's what I'm, I'm trying to square that.
If I could, it's, um, in the staff report, there's an analysis of the, right, because the, right, the, the T zones do exist throughout the, throughout the community. Uh, and then the small area plans do provide some additional guidance on, on the development of those individual T zones. Uh, line 171 of the staff report, um, it provides guidance out of the North Washington Street Small Area Plan. Uh, and the vision there, in the North Washington Street Small Area Plan was to sort of imagine that North Washington Street is something of a retail corridor, where you do have some larger parcels under consolidated ownership. Uh, and so the thought was, these T zones again are, are really steered toward these sort of one acre or smaller residential projects. And if there is the opportunity where you are along a commercial corridor to pursue a larger redevelopment, then the SE process is a better venue for that.
So you're saying, uh, preference is not to have residential that comes in through the SUP process? That, you can have residential there, but you'd have to come in through the special exception process?
Right, certainly, right. The, the existing zoning is, is sort of consistent with the small area plan in that it allows for commercial development along the corridor. And then if someone wanted to come in with residential in addition to the commercial, then the right avenue for that is the, at least as the city's got it worked out today, is the, is the SE process and a rezoning.
How would that be worded in a recommendation that we make back to council?
Yeah, I, I, um, we did put words on paper. I don't know that they were great. Yeah, I don't think they were great and that's obvious, you know, from the feedback we got at this work session. Um, so I think we would look to reword that again, but I think the important thing tonight is to, is to get a sense of, is that the right direction? Does the commission want staff to fix that wording?
Well, at conceptual level, I mean, I, I see the point that projects along that area are probably going to be big enough that you want the special exception and the full council discussion process to take place. At the same time, if I look down the road 10 years at that area, especially after the $22 million grant that the city is going to get to redo, to make the, the whole North Washington area more walkable, et cetera, and hopefully a western entrance to the East Falls Church Metro Station, I could see that area really becoming a magnet for people wanting to possibly just get along without a car and just, you know, kind of live in that area and make one part of an urban feel to it. So that's the only caution that I have is, is not to get too headlong into no residential that we don't.
Yeah, so one thing, sort of a reference point, sort of talking about sort of market factors. Back when we were, and you can see it in the Womata development around the metro station, that if, if you ask the development community what they want to build, they want to build townhouses. Um, and so if you, because that's the biggest return in terms of construction costs and sales point. So if you allow someone a path to go through sort of, um, of, um, one process that, that results in townhouses and one process that results in mixed-use development with, with committed commercial, they're going to pick the townhouse avenue. Uh, and so I think if the, if the small area plan vision is to, to support sort of a commercial corridor there, then I think you'd want to be careful about providing sort of an all-townhouse option, because I think that would be the most attractive.
What's going, I, I'm just, I'm just looking at that area on the Futurelanders map, right? Like the, there's some medium density residential, I think that historic properties, there's some historic properties over there too. Like if we say anything north of Great Falls.
There's a couple older, there are a couple, yeah.
Right, I mean, I just, I just like the part that's to the west of.
And the map is misleading because some of those properties, I mean, that's like, you know, included in the T zone, right? It's like the Sunrise is in T. I mean, some of the larger chunks there are probably not going to change.
Crossman Baptist.
Crossman Church. I mean, there's, there's a few properties that are probably not going anywhere for a very.
Cities, Cities Group Home.
I mean, yeah, again, like, we could probably look and there, there are a few candidates, maybe more on the other side of the street that, you know, people could actually consolidate and do something, some of the auto repair places, you know. So there's a couple older office buildings, but, um, but yeah, you start getting into like, you know, I don't know. That's the thing, it's such a small area we're dealing with here, we could almost plant it site by site. Which is kind of what they do in Fairfax, the comp plan kind of plants things site by site. But, um, not saying we should do that, but it's, uh, yeah, so it's difficult because, you know, you're dealing with, right, there are so many issues. I mean, I think Ms. Teets, you know, no longer on the, on the commission, but she, she raised the issue several times about the historic, several historic properties there, um, that, you know, we'd have to think carefully about what, you know, if someone came in with a proposal, you know, for those, I mean, you know. So yeah, it's, it's difficult because the character is so kind of diverse from lot to lot there. You have some office condominium buildings that are not going anywhere because they're owned by multiple, many different, you know, entities because they're office condos and then you have, um, yeah, so it's just a, it's hard. It's hard to come up with like a discrete set of rules that are going to work for all those scenarios.
That might be a good transition to the other new recommendation in the staff, in the motion about the historic. Can you talk about that?
Yeah, sure.
I think we didn't quite understand how that would work.
Yeah, uh, and I, I brought the, I had the code up, so this, this references the HCC. Yeah, this mouse is kind of finicky. Uh, where the HCC specifically calls out protections for designated properties in R1A and B. It doesn't mention T specifically, but I think the recommendation would be, you know, chewing on what, uh, you know, an amendment to this section might look like to include T properties. And the reason we, we, you know, it's, it might be inadvisable to just include T, um, into the existing code is because there are minimum lot size requirements that, you know, any, any subdivision of a designated property would require the, the minimum lot size of R1A, which is, is maybe, I think it's like 11,000 square feet. And, you know, would, would not necessarily encourage a property's preservation, but instead demolition because you couldn't subdivide it, just the structure and, you know, build around it essentially. So I think that's why that's in there is to recommend some language to, I'm sorry, I'm talking as I'm looking for the.
So more, to allow some flexibility in the lot size in order to encourage the preservation.
To encourage preservation and perhaps subdivision.
So what incentive do we have for people to utilize that? I mean, because it would be easier for them to just tear down a historic building and build a larger structure, right? Is there some sort of incentive that we can offer?
The time is an incentive, so under the HCC, if you do make an application to, to tear down, to raise a designated structure, you do have to make an application to the Historic Architecture Review Board. And if they deny the application, there's, um, the most likely waiting period for all properties is going to be a minimum one-year waiting period where you have to wait to see if a buyer wants to, to take the property on at a fair market value. So that one-year waiting period can be costly. And so I think part of the incentive here is that if you can come in with a proposal to reuse the land, hold on to the historic structure and find a way to, to incorporate it into the site design, then you can proceed with development. But if you're really set on tearing down that structure, then, then you're going to walk into that one-year waiting period and, and that's going to be pricey, because even after you get through that one-year waiting period, you're then starting your entitlement process. And so that's a, I think that's a, that's a disincentive to, to tear down. So it's, it, it's a disincentive to tear down, which means it's a, an incentive to incorporate the structure. And we, we do, um, we've been trading some messages and we have a, now a deeper conversation scheduled with the Chair of the Historical Commission, Ron Anzalone. And it was actually their comments that had motivated us to explore this deeper and try to figure out a way to hold on to these structures.
Okay, so just to be clear, historic structures in T zones are protected?
They don't have the same protections that they would if they were in an R1A or R1B. So we, we actually did write our recommendation a little quickly. So in a T zone today, you can actually, uh, so it's sort of a strange thing. If you've got a historic structure on an R1A or R1B lot, then you cannot reduce the lot size below 11,250. That same protection does not exist in T, so you could actually reduce the lot size below 11,250 if it was zone T. But I think what we would want to do is add some language, um, into the, into the, talking about sort of the considerations for these conditional uses. I think you would want to add a consideration that, that the historic structure is preserved, um, you know, within appropriate setting and incorporated into development.
Anything else on historic? I was going to suggest a segue to that, which also kind of falls under protected is our existing single-family homes. And the wording that you have in the staff report, maybe you could, uh, talk about that a little bit. I'm not sure I fully understand how that would work with the six months and so forth. Give that a go. Uh, existing single-family houses.
If the use is discontinued for six months, then they could not continue as single-family uses, is that right? Or something like that?
Yeah, I, you, you know, just want to know what is the impact on people that are in existing single-family homes? Their ability to expand their building? If their house burned down, could they rebuild it? You know, just stuff like that.
Yeah, so this was a, I think, a, a good comment that came in about, you don't want to put people in a bad situation where they developed a single-family house in good faith and then they're sort of stuck because the zoning code changes underneath them. We see that with non-conforming corner properties. We see it in Greenway Downs a lot where people have to come in for variances just to put a second story on an existing structure. So zoning can actually be a, sort of a disincentive to housing preservation. And so that's why we added this in here, the idea of if you've, right, because certainly there are a lot of, um, I'll say, single-family structures. Some of them are businesses, some of them are houses, especially along Park Avenue, but along other corridors in the city. So if someone, so under this provision, if someone has a single-family house and they're using it as a single-family house, with this provision, they could keep doing that so long as they keep using it as a single-family house. The reason for the six months is that's sort of a common timeframe for, for considering a, a use to have been abandoned. So if you have a use that's otherwise not allowed.
Six months?
So long as you keep using it, that's fine, but once you go past that six-month mark, you're considered to have abandoned it. And, and so. Well, that would still be continuing the use. So it's not, go ahead.
So say, say I'm in this T zone.
Yeah.
I have a by right, I can go commercial up to four stories, three stories, four stories?
Today, three stories.
So, but right now I have a single-family house that's decrepit and I want to develop it. So I can sit on it for six months, have nobody living in it, I can pave it over and get my parking lot. So I have all impervious lot. Then I can develop a by-right, commercial building, that's two stories, with zero setback on neighboring properties and not have to worry about my stormwater because I've paved over what's there. And so now I can just go with what's existing. Is that possible under this?
No, so a couple of things would trigger here. There, there, there are sort of different avenues there. So, um, uh, so this isn't really related to sort of a path for redevelopment in the sense that if you had a, a single-family house today and you wanted to redevelop it, you, you could do that now. You don't have to wait six months before you do that. You can change the use of your property to, to anything else that's by right. So that's, so it's not really, it, it's not a permission to change use, it's, it's a permission to keep using the single-family house. As far as the paving the lot, um, any little land disturbance on that scale would trigger at a minimum a grading plan requirement, if not also a site plan requirement.
Over 2,500 square feet, right?
Yeah, and so the, um, and so you would trigger a, a stormwater review. Uh, and under the existing code, you, you can't do anything with your land that increases your, your stormwater runoff. And that's, so whether you're building by right or not, you, you, you can't develop in a way that increases your stormwater runoff and that's going to be reviewed anytime somebody does something with their land on that scale. Right, if someone puts down a few brick pavers for a patio, that doesn't get checked because it's under the square-footage requirement, but certainly something as large as you're sort of asking, paving an entire lot would certainly trigger it. We've seen some of that creep in single-family, where people do sort of portion small pieces of patio on over time. And it, no individual addition to that residential patio triggers it. In the, in the commercial quarters, we generally keep a, a better eye on that because the provisions are a little different. Single-family is actually exempted from site plan review. So when things change, when conditions change on a commercial property, we hold them accountable to the site plan approval, which is either done by planning commissioner or, or, or planning director. Um, and we can hold them to what's on the paper and so we know that the engineering still holds. In residential, they're exempted from that. And so it's, it's different.
So this would be a way to protect, sorry, just to go back to the seat, this, this new, um, recommendation. It would be a way to protect existing single-family homeowners who, their use is going to be discontinued under the proposed.
Correct. They could continue to use it and they could continue to sort of modify the home and expand on it to within sort of the allowable construction limits.
And if their house burns down?
They could rebuild it.
And none of this affects the existing townhouse communities there along Park?
Uh, cr.
Because those are, those are under a different zoning.
Yes, yeah, and some of those are also subject to another, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, that, the discontinued for six consecutive months, you have to clarify what discontinued means. Do we, do you mean you're saying not paying their taxes, right?
Is that like a planning term that is widely understood?
Discontinued. I've never heard that.
Well, there, there, I mean, that, that's not a unique term. I think six months is actually kind of short, but what, what the use is. Actually, there's some stuff, you got to check Virginia Code, you know, there's some, there's some stuff in Virginia Code about like non-conforming uses and when they're allowed to be, you know, that is a zoning technique to, you know, you have non-conforming uses and if once they go away for a certain period of time, then they lose whatever protection they had as a non-conforming, as a legal non-conforming use. So there's a lot of case law in history about non-conforming uses and how to.
It's kind of similar to the situation we have with Greenway Downs?
Yeah, Greenway Down, well, Greenway Downs is a little different because there's no specific protection for those, for those houses. So for folks who don't know, Greenway Downs, um, uh, subdivided before the city had a zoning ordinance. And most of the lots, I think, have 50 feet a lot width, R1B requires, I think, 60 or 75 feet a lot width. And then the houses all have 20-foot setbacks and R1B requires 25-foot setbacks. And so what we, and they also don't meet the side yard setback requirements. And so what we see when someone wants to put a second story on their, on their Rambler, um, they have sort of two options. They can tear the thing down and push the house back five feet. they have sort of two options. They can tear the thing down and push the house back five feet, or they can come in for a variance. Often those variances are granted, although there's a question about whether variances should be granted on such a routine nature. The Planning Commission in the past has suggested providing an overlay so that people don't have to go through that process. You know, if this is, I, I think generally preserving a house is, the, the sort of, the greenest building you have is the one you've already got. There's a lot of what's called embedded carbon, the, the sort of carbon cost of, of getting materials on site, removing the materials from the site. So finding a way to keep those houses and allowing people to, to, to sort of stay in place and expand as they need is certainly a more sustainable option. But, so it's, it's a little different, it's a little bit different, a little bit the same, that you've got something that's generally working and you wanna find a way to protect it.
Since we're on this page, do you wanna talk about parking? I know you had questions about parking, Rob, so there was a recommendation there.
Yeah, I'm curious about the changes here and how you calculate off-street parking availability. In some ways, off-street parking. What's the gist?
Sure. Is, sorry, sorry, to clarify, is the question how is off-street parking calculated?
Just in general, just what's the, the genesis and the change, what was it before?
I, I think it was two, two and a half, off-street parking spaces per dwelling unit, I think. So, yeah, the, the recommendation here is to, to put the, the minimum down to, to one, as, you know, as part of an, an environmental measure.
Same as single-family housing.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I think state code, I don't know, I think it says you have to give people two years. You can't limit it to six months, I think.
You may have to be more.
I'm Googling it as we're in real time here, but I, I think it's, I think it's two years is, is Virginia Code on that point.
We should match the code. We shouldn't, we shouldn't do worse than the code.
I don't think we're allowed, I don't think we're allowed to do less than the code.
Correct. We are not empowered to do that.
Sometimes there's weird Easter eggs in the code.
It does touch on another issue, and that's the, at some point, this, this will have to go to the legal review. I don't know that it has so far.
We've had hallway chats with the city attorney to make sure that we're not sort of off-base with what we're saying and, and making sure our recommendations are consistent with enabling legislation. But obviously, once you all sort of formalize your, your recommendation back, obviously that would get scrubbed.
Just as far as parking, if, if this was eliminated completely, I would probably be supportive of that. It was off-street parking as well in that area, especially on Park, so. Again, to your point earlier, if parking regulations in the city is tarry for, for the way to be developed, then.
So just to clarify, the intent behind this provision is actually to reduce the amount of required parking?
One.
Correct. And, oh, and you're suggesting reduce it to zero?
Yeah, it's let the developer decide if they want to put parking there.
Yeah, it's not mine.
Yeah, maybe I'll park too far, but.
I think that the, the newer, like, mixed-use buildings that have been built lately, I think the ratio that we're seeing there is zero-point-nine spaces per unit is what, and they're parked much higher than that. I'm not sure exactly what they're parked at, but they're not, the parking is not filling in those buildings. So I think, looking at that guidance, and those are much larger projects, much larger buildings, way more residents, but, you know, I think people do tend to have one car. I think you could have a building where you have people. And I know, I know people in this, in this, in the city who don't own vehicles, but they're kind of a rare breed at this point. So, I would be comfortable with the, the requirement for one, though, I, you know, when we look at our minimum parking requirements in the future, I think that would be, you know, a bigger, bigger picture discussion that I think we need to have. But I don't know that that's something we should solve for here.
The council said that they wanted to look at comprehensive parking.
Yes, yeah.
Did you talk about the one, or the I, item, the maximum one curb cut per street frontage? That's per project, I assume?
Yeah, per, yeah, right, per, I mean, per project facing, you know, every street would be one curb cut to, you know, incentivize parking in the rear and, like, off-street instead of having it front.
It also helps to protect pedestrians, right, because you have fewer curb cuts and fewer conflicts with cars. So when people are walking down the street, it's safer.
You can.
Street frontage, like, in a townhouse, you know, the example.
So I don't in any way mean to throw at, I'll pick a non-city project, that's what I'm gonna do. The, so you can see, you can see, oh gosh, I'm not gonna be able to find it quickly though, but you can, you can see sort of townhouse projects throughout the region where the way the townhouses met the parking requirement was to do one garage sort of space on the ground floor, and then they tammed and parked one space in the driveway in front of it. And so then every, you know, sixteen-to-twenty-foot wide townhouse has a driveway coming out onto the street. And so yes, you've met the parking code, but now you've made a pretty bad condition for pedestrians, and you've actually removed all the parking that used to be along the street. So you've essentially taken the public street parking and privatized it for the folks adjoining. And so the vision here is that you would, you would pull the townhouses closer to the street and that you would still require, at least under this recommendation, you'd still require the space, but the way you would access it is by some common drive aisle off the side of the project or from the back of the project.
One, one driver curb cut per lot?
Per project development. So if you built a bank of four, six, eight townhouses, you would have one curb cut that, that would sort of pell around the site.
To feed the project, yeah.
And if that project was a corner project, would it have?
Yeah, there's a, in terms of design, you can actually see that on the, the townhouse projects on Park Avenue today. If you think about, there's, there's the one townhouse project on the south side of Park where there's sort of a central walking sort of muse, and then there are drive aisles on either side. Now, they actually have two, but the idea is that all the parking is sort of side-loaded to the units, and so that you end up with only two curb cuts on the street. And then the townhouses on the north side, again, they, they share one curb cut to access Park Avenue, and then they, the access to the, the garages off of the drive aisle.
Is it in our, in our urban design guidelines by any chance?
There is guidance to reduce the number of curb cuts. The design guidance is in, and I think you would probably wanna have some sort of waiver provision for, for, that would sort of go to the Planning Commission here to consider a special circumstance where they might need for some strange, right, maybe they wanna preserve a tree, and the only way to do that is to get a second drive aisle or something like that.
I guess these sort of things are things that we could recommend, but we don't have to solve every.
Correct.
At this point.
I have one other thing on parking. So parking right now is a buy-right primary use. And I think it should not be a buy-right primary use, so I would like to recommend that we remove parking as a buy-right use. I don't think we have a lot in a T-zone that it should just, just be a parking lot. I think parking can be incidental to the property, but it shouldn't be. And I, I mean, I guess if we wanna grandfather that, that in explicitly, that's fine, but I don't think people should be buying these lots and building a parking lot.
I don't think we have any prime, any principal, any, any, like, pay, like, parking lots, right? We don't have any, anything like that, right? Along that?
Right, I think all the parking lots are accessory to.
We don't have any principal parking lots.
But, we could, I guess somebody could build one. I don't know why they would, but we might as well just, I mean, it can be, yeah, just remove it as a principal use.
I would support that.
Can you think about off the, the other current buy-right use? Because the only thing that was taken off is boarding houses.
Yes, can you talk about that, the, the definition of the clinics for human care? Can you explain what that is?
So that's one I need to do a little more research on, and I can do that. I can reach out to the zoning administrator and get a advice from, from her about sort of what is included in that list and what's not. That's, we've had a bit of staffing turnover, and I know that that's, that's one that our previous expert on this, Susan Bell, had recommended incorporating, and so I'd wanna, in either case, I should get some advice from the zoning administrator about what's included in that grouping.
When I looked at the zoning for the B1 district, I saw two separate uses listed. One was institutions for human care, and the other was clinics, among other, many other permitted uses. So I wondered if this was an attempt to kind of combine those two things, though they do sound different.
Also residential institution, what, clarify on what that is.
That's provided today, right?
Ordinance has so many, like, anachronistic terms, like residential institution, I don't know what that is.
What's the, what's the, what's like the?
That may be something like a sunrise. I can, I can double-check what, what's, what's meant there.
Right, now we'd call that assisted living or independent living.
That would be clearer.
And spend some breakfasts. I don't know, I mean, I guess if we're looking at this, we might, we might look at all the current hire rights.
Yeah, if someone wanted to have a bed and breakfast here in Falls Church, I, I think in that, in the T-zones, I think we'd be okay with that, I don't know. Well, another can of worms.
People are already doing that, right?
That whole, that's a completely different can of worms. I don't know if we wanna tackle that.
Don't want to. Is there another topic we wanna?
We haven't talked about scale yet, have we? That's kind of.
Started, I think.
In the context of what, yeah.
Well, can we just talk about scale and without getting into the uses and just, the, just the form of the building and the lot coverage and setbacks?
Sure. Do you have a recommendation?
So, yeah, no, go ahead. No, you, Brett.
Well, I mean, as part of, you know, my whole theme, I mean, I think on Park, I mean, I know we've come, I think it, you know, we're talking about allowing townhouses or stacked townhouses or quads. I mean, I think we probably need to go down to something like a forty-foot height as opposed to right now. I think the proposal was like fifty?
It's forty-five today for the other uses, but, yes, it's fifty in four stories.
Right, so fifty, I think, is too tall, you know, and so, you know, I was thinking more like, you know, forty, which is more like a townhouse, typical townhouse height, but.
Well, at street level, this has three stories, right?
Yes, and forty at the street. It's a ten-foot step back and step up.
So this is lower than council's, or what we're talking about is lower than?
Right, right, at least, at least along that stretch. I mean, I think along North Washington, you know, it's different, but. And, you know, as far as, and as far as the lot coverage, I mean, you know, it's, it's hard, you know, without, again, you know, it's all the arbitrary. I mean, it's hard, it's, it's hard to, you know, identify what the right lot coverage is. I know eighty seemed too high. You know, wasn't leaving enough of the lot, you know, as open space. But, you know, sixty could be a little low, you know, also for some, for townhouses. I mean, also, you know, for townhouses, a lot of times, these, you know, this is not gonna be a big townhouse community, right? We're talking about a small, smaller areas here. And so if they have their own kind of privacy yard in the back, you know, I mean, sometimes it's okay if they have more lot coverage in general, if they have a little bit of outdoor privacy space, like, you know, a hundred-and-fifty or two-hundred square feet of like a privacy yard. And so, you know, it's hard to say that sixty is right there. I don't know, it's, you know, without looking at like a site, you know, maybe seventy's okay if they're providing a privacy yard. So, I don't know.
Problem that I saw was when you get up to like the eighty or maybe even seventy-five, it starts to force the setbacks to be so small. So if you wanna maintain some setbacks, then you.
Well, right, there's different ways to control bulk. You can control it with setbacks, with height, with open space. I mean, there's a few different ways to get at the same end result, you know, in an ordinance, and, you know, you don't always need all, all of them at the same time because it may be, you know, counterproductive, but, you know, it's a question of what are we most concerned about? Are we most concerned about height? Are we most concerned about, you know, separation from adjacent uses? I mean, you know, that's, you know, I think that's something that, you know, we need to decide as far as what we're, you know, what are we trying, what's the end result we're trying to provide?
I think, yeah, I think getting the height right at the street is definitely important to create that kind of urban, the, the right feel. And I agree with you that, you know, North Washington might have different requirements in that regard than Park Avenue might, but. So, yeah, whether, you know, forty feet, I might ask our, our new member, Sharon, to help us a little bit with this conversation. You know, I know there's this idea of creating this sense of enclosure for pedestrians, so building buildings, like, actually can create like a nice walkable environment. But if you make them too tall, then they can be, especially if there's no sort of like interaction between the building and the street. You know, if you have doorways that people are coming in and out of and, and porches and things like that where there's human life and activity happening, that's one kind of building. If you have kind of a large, you know, a building that doesn't have that, it can just feel like a big blank wall. So I think a lot of it kind of depends on the use too. But, you know, I, I guess, I think the idea, or the way I read this was like, so we're at forty-five feet today and three stories. And the idea of going to fifty feet and four stories, I sort of interpreted that as, well, we can have another story. We can have another level of apartments and fit more housing units, which we need. So that was sort of the way I interpreted that. I don't know if others did as well, or if that was the intention.
Yeah, the, the three stories, forty-five feet has always been sort of an odd combination in the sense that with forty-five feet, you can actually fit four stories of a building in there. So we have had a lot of applicants confused over that, that combination. So part of it was to write the number of stories with the number of feet, right? Obviously, that's an urban design approach, not necessarily an intensity approach. And then the reason for moving from forty-five to fifty was that if somebody wanted to have maybe a, a grander sort of ceiling height within a townhouse, if they wanted an eleven-foot ceiling and you still wanted to have fourteen or sixteen feet of ceiling height in the ground floor for some sort of commercial use or a taller lobby, the idea was that, 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 you know, if you think about ten feet per floor, and then that remaining ten feet could be divvied across those floors if they needed a little more ceiling height. It would also allow, if you had a, building height is calculated from average grade, so if you had a sort of an odd slope, it might give you a little bit of play to fit a building without getting, uh, variance.
I hate, I don't wanna call on you, but I just.
The, the only concern that I have with the height is that, I mean, is it possible that, you know, it's supposed to be a transition, right, from our high-volume commercial? But with this, isn't there gonna be some instances where our transition is higher than what's in the loca, and that's just gonna look weird? That doesn't even make sense, right? So like, we're gonna have some spaces where it's supposed to, you know, the height's supposed to be here, and then we transition down. In some spaces, it's gonna literally be the opposite.
Yeah, we have that already with Vito's, right?
Yeah, that's, that's a problem.
Until those properties redevelop, which eventually you would expect them to, I just don't know that those kinds of.
Yeah, I just think that, speaking, I think for some people in the audience that we heard that are still here, when they testified, they're like, okay, well, we're in a building and there's supposed to be a transition, transition down to less density. And the way it's written, in some spaces, there's gonna be a transition to more density.
More height, you mean?
Yeah, more height.
But most of the buildings on Broad will be higher. Most of the buildings are able to be built to seventy-five. Is that the buy-right height? You might need to help me remember the numbers. And then under special exception, is it fifty-five and eighty-five?
Yeah, for B1, it's fifty-five and eighty-five, and for B2, it's five and a hundred-ten.
And most of what we're building now on, on Broad is the eighty-five?
Plus or minus, they usually keep a couple feet, just in case something happens.
Can you establish a code that says, look what's there, and then use that to determine how high you go? It seems hard to have them.
Right, no, I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that.
I don't wanna go there, having to get into the trouble with our lot, like, like a lot averaging, you know, stuff when, you know, it's like a moment in time and then things change.
But, I mean, I'm glad that we went from coverage from eighty to sixty. I mean, when we all looked at the, the visual of the eighty, it just didn't fit with anything in the town.
It looked like a B-zone, mixed-use, largely used project.
Yeah, so, you know, I know we're kind of now saying, oh, could it be seventy or, but, you know, and I think also, again, to get public support when it goes from eighty to sixty, we're probably gonna get more public support. If you took the stories from, you know, four and, and made it three, or brought it down a little bit, again, you could say, we heard you, community, and we still need to do economic development. That's what this is all about. But we are listening and we are trying our best to do a zoning change that stimulates the development, but listens to the public sentiment that doesn't want this. So, and it seems like we did that with the, uh, block coverage, but we haven't done that with the height.
I think we also did it with the setback. The rear setback is now proposed to be twenty feet.
Okay, yeah, I know, so we got one on the category. Um, so it's just.
Um.
How about, uh, impervious coverage? Right now, it's, there's no limit, right?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about that too, and I know Sharon would.
Yeah, I would, but, um, I, I kinda wanna go back a little bit, 'cause I'm looking at where these T zones are on Park Avenue. The proposed ones that are on the south side of Park, right, they're over on the backside of the spectrum, right, to the west of the spectrum. Um, where the, I think that, there's a couple of low houses right now.
Right.
And then, um, that, there's that garage, that parking garage for the Hilton.
Hilton, yeah.
And then back by, what is that, South Oak Street? I'm trying to visualize what's over there.
You're Saint James, it's Saint James, the, the school, the church.
Saint James is right there, so I think.
There's a law office on the one side and Saint James on the other.
Yeah, 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 I was just trying to visualize what that lot was. Um, and, and I, I mean, Saint James could go, you know, use that parking lot and develop that at some point and keep parking underground, right, if they, if they ever wanted to. But I think the issue for me is for the fifty feet going across to the north side of Park. I'm not so concerned about the backside because of how everything's already developed there, right, or has a by right to be at eighty, eighty-five?
Fifty-five with eighty-five under special exception.
Right, but it's special exception, most of them have gone up. So, but my concern is, you know, how does that step back away from the north side of Park, so that as you're walking on Park, you don't feel this total lopsidedness of fifty feet
Balance.
to a regular thirty-foot house, right, that's a house.
Yeah, so two things on that. So on the north side, where you have the single-family zoning, the, the by right height, uh, is thirty-five feet to the midline of the roof. Um, what we've seen with some of the larger square footage houses is actually the peak of the roof actually goes above thirty-five feet. Um, what's included in what council referred out is actually a required step back, so if, uh, the T-zone is, is adjacent, uh, either, uh, the parcel lines touch or it's across the street from either R one A or R one B. Um, the maximum height would be reduced, uh, I think by ten feet, uh, and require a ten-foot step back.
So it would be forty at the street.
And so that would better match.
And then back, and then back ten, and then up to the full fifty.
The full fifty to the, to the midline or to the max?
So it'd be, um, so at the front setback line, you'd be allowed forty feet, ten feet back from the, from the setback line, you'd be allowed your, your, your extra ten feet to get up to fifty. So you'd be forty feet at the setback requirement, um, and so that would be, um, a fairly close match to the thirty-five feet to the midline, um, of the single-family house across the street.
But I guess what's proposed today would be less than those business condos that are along Park Avenue across the street.
I've been trying to find out the heights of those. Do you guys?
Uh, we were out, uh, Jack and I were out counting bricks, uh, to.
Thank you.
Try and estimate the height, uh, and it, 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 it seems to be over fifty feet. Um, and so I think, uh, right, that's, uh, one of the benefits of the step back, um, uh, i- i- is that it would be below that fifty feet, so that's, you know, that may be something that you wanna consider, that that step back along the front, it's just maybe something you need to work in.
That's something that I'd like to see.
Regardless of what's across the street.
Yes, it's always.
No, it's Panera, so we, we were, a, a couple of people walked by wondering why I was, but they didn't say anything. They just walked faster.
Um, so. But, yeah, I'm getting the better sense of like the current height, what's happening around. We've certainly heard from the neighbors, um, that, that increasing five, so, so current by right use is up to forty-five, forty-five feet, right, for all of the uses, but it's not at by, right? Um, we're, and so we're only increasing by five feet, but we are also doing a lot of other increases, like we're doing this to all houses. Um, I think this issue of surrounding um, conditions is often addressed through this communication, so it's a special use. There would be, um, there, and you said it goes through the architectural advisory board, special use process, so.
Yes, what we had laid out is planning commission A A B.
Right, right, okay, so, and then city council decides, so lots of opportunity will come up on it, you know, um, boards and commissions, there's the whole.
For this process, uh, and this was following, uh, sort of because it's a smaller project, slim down the reviews, um, to just those two groups.
But those two groups could ask for comments, other groups to comment.
And it is common for other groups to.
To comment anyway, yeah.
Um, and because this is anything, we expect that anything that goes into this, that anything that would be this high would have an impact.
Under the current market, yes.
Yeah, the thing, I think that might affect scale is the fifteen percent tree canopy coverage. Gotta have some land there to.
And they're required to have a landscape buffer, isn't that right? Is, is it a ten-foot landscape buffer at the rear setback?
Depending on the abutting use.
Okay.
In this case, yeah, it'd be less intense use, abutting, and more intense use, so. Like townhouses wouldn't be expected to buffer a five-story, five-story property.
Okay.
I don't know, trees, if they have to, I mean, now, for ten foot, for the ten foot rear step back, is it five?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Twenty is the current proposal.
Oh, oh, okay, I'm sorry, is it another one line? And that's what Urban Forest Engineering is suggesting, right, because it, because trees won't fit in a ten-foot even survive, so it's just a couple of, of, of.
Right.
Right. So, impervious coverage, did we wanna come back to that? Um, I'm certainly agreeable to putting a limit on there, and I realize these things are arbitrary, but I don't know how to do it. Um, right now, it's a hundred. I think that's, leads to a bad result if that were to happen. Um, I think the, the most I can see would be eighty percent, but I'm certainly open to something even less than that. Impervious, yeah.
I think it's hard to know. I'm not an engineer to know what our targets are to reduce our runoff. And I think until we know that, I don't think we can answer this. I think we need to have the city engineer and the stormwater ta- task force weigh in on what are our goals by, you know, our five-year goal, our ten-year goal, to reducing that runoff and addressing the problems that we already have, and then how can we get there with, with the new development and kind of date that, those requirements in, rather than say, you just have to do what it is right now, because right now isn't, isn't working.
So we would have something like, in our recommendation back to council, that they go through that type of a process.
Maybe, but, I mean, the, well, but the problem is, you know, you could treat, I mean, an engineer can design a big enough, you know, treatment to treat a hundred percent of the lot coverage. So the question is, what are we trying to achieve here? Is this, are we, are we concerned about lot coverage because of stormwater?
B M, B M Ps.
Or are we concerned about it because of what it does to the, the form of the, of the development? When, when you cover that much?
Maybe both.
I was, I was honored on the form side, so.
So, yeah, so it's a different.
More of a global problem, though, with the, with, I think it's more of a global problem within the city context. That's what I mean, like, it's not property by property, it's how all those properties run off and what that does to our system.
Right, but I'm saying, right, if, like, you know, an engineer could certainly design a system to, like, treat a hundred percent of the lot paved as a parking lot, they could come up with an underground system and treat it and meet, and meet the ordinance requirements under Chesapeake Bay. So, but, so, but I thought we were more concerned about the, what a, what a, what a lot looks like when it's covered that much. Now, we're talking about building coverage or lot coverage? Or, sorry, building coverage or, or, you know?
Yeah, lot coverage.
So impervious coverage, so we're talking.
Sixty percent would be the building coverage, right?
So we're talking about even if it was a unit that was only occupying, you know, thirty percent of the lot, they had a big patio.
Or you need a drive aisle. I mean, you need room for parking and a, and a, and a drive aisle, and so, yeah. The other thing I think to remember is that T zones are only three percent of the city land, and like, really, I think our problem is in our residential neighborhoods, and that's not something we're gonna solve here. I think we should solve it. I totally agree with you, so, um, I don't, maybe there's some, something we can do. I know Arlington requires, uh, what is it, the first two inches to be retained on site? You know about this more than I do, Tim.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, maybe that's something we could look at for T zones specifically. I, I don't know, um.
Yeah, it's a broader issue, and so trying to come up with something that would deal with it for three percent.
We aren't gonna solve our stormwater issues in our T zones.
Parking anyhow.
No, but I, I don't think we should be.
They shouldn't make it worse. No, I agree.
To it, right, I think we need to, we need to start setting that goal.
Yes, yeah.
With the, with the zones that we're looking at now, and then that kind of starts to grow into the next.
Yeah. Agreed, I agree with that.
The next zoned area, right? Um. Lost my train of thought. Um. In terms of, uh, the parking that's required, I think the im- imperviousness of the site can contribute to the sustainability of the site, which is also one of the things that we want the developers of these sites to be looking at is, are we achieving gold or better on them? How do you do that? And, and getting rid of the impervious surface helps with part of that, right? So I think you can have parking areas that do have those special pavers that allow water to permeate through.
Yeah.
Um, but then you, if you're retaining water on site, what does that do to the sized trees that you can plant there, you know, so I think it's a delicate balance of all of that, but I think if we start to say, this is actually related to the sustainability of the site, um, then it's gonna start to inform how much of a target we want, right? So if we say, if, if after the engineers say, okay, well, we can do better on these sites by reducing the stormwater runoff by thirty percent, I, I truthfully, I, I don't know what the right percentage is. I'm just pulling a percentage out of, out of the air right now. But if we can say, okay, we're gonna reduce it by thirty percent, that actually helps the, the developer and the design team to look at, okay, how can we?
How do we do it?
How do we do it, and what other things can we employ in the sustainability of this development too?
I love that idea.
What's, what, what was the actual recommendation would be to do?
Have a, I think it's have a goal for improving stormwater, um, like a reduction in quantity of stormwater runoff, is that right? Rather than say, you, you can do whatever it is now, so if it's a fully a hundred percent impervio- permeable lot that all the water's just sheeting off of it, so that's, it's okay if that continues to happen, but I don't know what those numbers or percentages would be either.
Yeah, but we have stormwater regs today, though.
Right, and I don't know if it's a percentage of what is, is happening there. I think we have to have a, just look at how different lots are contributing more or less, right, and how are we gonna limit the runoff? You've got one that's contributing more, and you say, okay, just drop it by thirty percent, but it's mostly parking. It's already impervious. Thirty percent for that one doesn't even scratch the surface of the building, right? Here's my question on that. I fully support everything that you're saying. I'm thinking like that, if this is like a citywide issue and solving that in the context of T zones, which is what, do we say three percent of that, how much of that?
Three percent.
Three percent, like, it's so hard to do this in the absence of like a city.
And there.
Green infrastructure plan and updated like stormwater maps and.
Right.
Like, I, and I also, like, if, if we're, right, get back to our, uh, goals. But I do environmental stuff for a living, and I've got my P I, I have a F S E, and like advocating for stormwater plants, so I, I want to be like, you know, that it's not because I oppose just what you're saying, but it's more like, does this project carry the weight of that? Like, if we're thinking about our goals, we want more housing at some point, but which engineers, we're talking about city starters.
And where do, where do, city engineers, yeah.
City engineers, not, but not project engineers, so we're not acting to.
No, not project engineers, because I think, I guess you can see those numbers, right?
Right.
I think we need, as a city, to say, this is our goal across the city. And I think if you're, if, if we're gonna say, well, this is only three percent, it's not gonna make a difference, but when do you start trying to make a difference? Right, so I'd like to see at least.
But also, re- re-
Yeah, if we have an opportunity.
But, yeah.
Remember that people are only responsible for the additional, so the lots, some of these lots are largely paved today, so you're only responsible for additional, otherwise, you know, under, under Virginia law, it's like, it's redevelopment, so you're only required to detain the extra c- coverage that they're adding, so the lot's already like seventy percent.
Well, that was my, yeah, that was my question. What is the state?
Uh, right, I'm sorry, yeah, so it's, it's like, right, so there, so, and the Chesapeake Bay ordinance, that's how it works, so you're only responsible for the delta.
We wanna incentivize redevelopment so that they can improve the lot, and I guess my question, part of like.
Right.
That comes along with redevelopment, sure.
Is what's, if we're talking about small lots, like not these big, special exception, which we maybe should do much better. Um, what's, what allows for the redevelopment that is, um, feasible on that smaller lot size, but like, you know, calls to me to comment a couple of times, like, legal costs don't change depending on the size of your, I imagine that engineering cost is expensive, so is it easier to calculate for impervious surface coverage, or is it, is, but you're saying that you want the city to come up with a goal, site by site for each plan, or, or maybe it's.
I think the city needs a goal across the city, right?
Once, yes.
And then I think, then you can target the areas that are really the problem areas, right?
Right, because we don't know which of the T zones are the problem children, right?
Exactly, exactly, because like, like, like you said, there are some that are all parking lots, yeah, right, so for them to use it by thirty percent
Yeah.
is like, the original infrastructure and the.
But Brent, are, are you saying we aren't able to ask them to reduce it? Is that because of the state law?
Well, I mean, I think the cha- our current Chesapeake Bay ordinance, I think, you know, bottom line, the other, the other side of the point is if we wanna incentivize development and you begin to put extra requirements on top of it, um.
Right.
So you're saying, you know, we wanna incentivize a certain type of development, and then you say, you know, but in order to do it, you now, you have to, you know, now, you know, do extra stuff that, you know, you don't normally have to do under, and I, and I, I'm not sure under our city ordinance, how much we can go above and beyond
Fun and.
the state, you know, the Chesapeake Bay requirements for stormwater, which is the two and ten year, um.
We have on special exceptions, but those are.
Right, normally you can do it if you're, again, if you're incentivizing, giving them more, you know, like additional, then they're rezoning, they're gonna do a rezoning, and they're getting more for their, you know, more development than they can do now by right. Um, but I'm not sure, Paul, do you know that? Can we, I mean, how much, what ability do we have to require more than Chesapeake Bay says?
Um.
Stormwater detention.
So, uh, so any answer I give, I would sort of double check with the city attorney, um, the, I mean, in some ways, you, uh, so I just have to check with the attorney on square. Um, how would that be done? How much of it could be done? I think that's an interesting question. Uh, you're right that the.
We always advocate for more. We can, and during the special exception process, you know, we're negotiating, we're advocating, we're pushing for more, trying to get them to voluntarily agree to do more.
Right, so.
But we're gonna write it into our ordinance, that's the question, if we're gonna require that anyone who wants to, you know, we're gonna put it in the, in the ordinance as part of the special permit, you know, requirements, is you need to, whatever it is, detain, you know, the hundred-year storm or, or, you know, whatever it is. Um, you know, that, yeah, I just don't know if we can do that.
Yeah, pre- I'm sorry. I was just gonna say, previous S E projects, um, uh, have volunteered, uh, to, to reduce their stormwater, uh, more than the code requirements. Um, typically, that was ten percent, but with more recent projects, that percentage has actually been going up.
Right.
Um, in, in some respects, the reason they can do that is because they, they typically have large acreages that they're working with, and they stick giant cisterns down in the ground, and that's where the water gets stored and then sort of released over time. Um, so some of this is also just sort of a site engineering, uh, when you're working on maybe a quarter acre lot. Um, you may not really have the flexibility to, to, to stick a, um, a large enough sort of cistern.
I think it's coupled with developing, um, with, yeah, trying to meet the, like, and.
Sure.
So that's, that's one of the, one of the ways.
Yeah, there are these different dimensions i- in sort of working through the staff recommendation, that, the, right, the different levers, and obviously, you pull on these different levers for different reasons, but, um, you know, thinking about the, is it, uh, building coverage, is it impervious coverage, is it, um, tree canopy coverage, is it stormwater reduction? So, so all of this is looking at how do we sort of not create sort of like a giant parking lot that just sort of runs its, its water into the, into the, into the neighbor. Um, and so I think the, uh, um, so some of this might be, um, right, we don't have a tree canopy requirement today for T zones, and so by introducing a tree canopy requirement, they may, that may by itself solve part of the problem, because it's gonna drive the site design in certain ways. Um, I am worried about, because these are smaller sites, I'm always nervous about the Murr, uh, sort of example in the city, this was the, the mixed-use overlay zone that was, was so well-designed, no one can build under it. Um, and so, I, and for smaller sites, I am thinking about, well, if we've already limited the, you know, if we've already set the lot coverage and we've required a tree canopy, do those two things in combination, uh, sort of largely.
That's, uh, that's seventy-five percent of the lot, right? Sixty plus fifteen. Sixty plus fifteen.
Uh, yeah, you could, uh, I guess realize that, uh, I think, you know, one of the things, uh, just thinking through, right, if you've got sixty percent of the lot for the building and then you've got whatever percentage you, you uh sort of um, sort of wanna mandate as sort of non-impervious, do they still have enough space to do sort of one drive aisle in the back? Are you gonna push them into sort of front loaded parking in the front? And so it's, um, you know, is there still room for sidewalk in the front? So I, I, yes, you could sort of leave it to the project engineer to figure it out, but I think you're right, the city engineer, um, well, I think what the city engineers could probably provide is sort of like an overall, you know, to define of what is the green infrastructure plan of, um.
Right, which we've been asking for. And like, I wonder if, is this, this is just, is, is a citywide issue along with parking, along with affordable housing, like can we include our recommendations that we've been asking for, like more thoughtful, like sort of stormwater and green infrastructure plan and all these other things as well? And T zones happening in the absence of these more comprehensive policies and strategies and it's hard to solve for that. Or maybe.
But should we also look for incremental improvements?
Yes, well, absolutely, yes. And, and I think that, but I guess what I, I think that the first impervious state's covered is easier in this contest.
If we wanna get something done by February fifteenth, I think it is.
What, what is your suggestion?
I, I threw out eighty percent, uh total impervious coverage limit, but uh.
So sixty percent lot coverage plus fifteen percent tree covered plus?
Yeah, well, sixty percent.
Oh wait, sixty percent.
Building, yeah. Right. As opposed to what it is today, which is a hundred.
You've got fifty percent tree covered, five percent extra.
Right. In the meantime, we absolutely should be looking at stormwater across all angles in the city overdue. Um, what else? We haven't done affordable housing, did we wanna jump in on that one?
Yeah. It's coffee.
Ten o'clock.
Let's just think about. Yeah, we cover this parking, we cover almost every issue besides affordable housing.
Well, here's my questions, Derek, because I want.
I'll say it again, because.
Priority, uh, but I don't think that's, that's true and so I think we, I'm, to hear from you. Bring it home.
All we have to do is create some kind of like T-zone development district that every single time development happens and the tax base goes up in these areas, it just directly goes into a fund.
Problem I have with that is that you can identify the current value and you can take a stab at what the increased value is. That's fine on the revenue side, on the cost side, it, it may get tougher as far as what capital costs that are generally applicable, schools and all that stuff that should be applicable, that would have to come out of additional tax revenues. Um, and all sorts of city infrastructure issues, I mean, we're way behind on uh stormwater pipes and, you know, redoing that, sidewalks, uh stoplights. We can't get a stoplight where I live. Uh, so, I mean, there's a lot of basic issues that kind of have to go on that ledger that I would like to see examined before. I mean, there may be a delta beyond covering those things because these are places where we already have the streets in, we already have, I mean, so maybe the infrastructure costs aren't quite as high in these areas and that would produce more of a, if you wanna call it a surplus, that could be used for this purpose. And if that's the case, I, I guess I would go along with that. Even though I can think of other ways to spend that money too, I mean, why not make all the buildings net zero? So we're not contributing further to the greenhouse gas emission issue.
For setting your policy.
Right. Yeah.
Bottom line is, as a city, we have never um provided sufficient funds for affordable housing, ever.
Correct.
And so, y- y- of course, we have all these other things, parks and stormwater and sewer and the schools, obviously, but, I mean, we have been funding those things, maybe not sufficiently to some people's liking, but more so than any other priority, um especially for the schools. Um, and when we look at the percent of our operating budget that goes to affordable housing via V, any other municipality that surrounds us, we're way under. So, so at some point, even though we know the costs are gonna go up in all the other priority areas, we've got to make a commitment to affordable housing. Um, and I'm just thinking that we wanna grow the pie and more equitably distribute it. By making these changes, we are potentially growing the economic pie and yes, we are taking some of that and equitably distributing it, where as a city, we have not done that. So the other part of it is, well, then let's not make the changes, let's not grow and let's keep the tax base that we have and keep funding it as we have been. That's fine, but if we're gonna do growth, and we have made a commitment as a city in the last ten years, we used to be known as the anti-growth place and now we are not perceived that way anymore. But are we perceived as the equitable growth place? Absolutely not. So we've got to make some changes and here is a prime opportunity to do that.
Derek, your, your recommendation has, can you just sort of, just sort of generalize all the tax revenues, so tax revenue or just?
Well, I mean, all right, so I think we should take it all because we are talking about making a change to provide housing, right? We all know where the demand is, the demand is on the housing side, not on the commercial side. So we're gonna open up the opportunity for eight hundred thousand dollar town, townhomes to be built, great. Um, but let's also make sure that, because we're not just doing that out of the goodness of our heart, actually, we're doing this because developers are gonna make more money and we are gonna get greater tax revenue by doing it. So let's now take that tax revenue, that increment, and distribute it towards housing that will provide for low income people who make fifty um percent and below our annual median, or the AMI. So that's what my proposal would be and I think that would signal to folks that we are committed to equitable growth, that we are finally willing to put some of our tax dollars towards affordable housing. Um, and I think it would mean a lot for our city and our priorities in putting our money where we say our priorities are. So, you know, again, that's, that's the proposal and knowing that it's only three percent of the land, uh it is a very small amount of our tax base that we would be allocating for affordable housing.
Well, increase, like with increase, not.
Increase.
It's kinda like a TIF, right? I mean, that's basically what you're talking about.
Basically, but I wouldn't call it a TIF because people don't like that in the state of Virginia. You just have to call it like something else, but a T-zone development district works for me. Um, we're doing, you can call it the T-zone equitable development district for all I care, I mean, you call it whatever you wanna call it. Um, but the bottom line is that we are doing development to provide people greater access to our great schools and to our great parks and to our community. So I think in the last ten years, we have done a lot of development, but we have not done equitable development. This would be one of the first opportunities to do that.
I would, I would support that recommendation to council, I think it's just important to remember that it is a recommendation and it's sort of a council decision, right? Whether or not that is how the money is, we don't allocate money here on the planning commission, we can make recommendations. But that's, it's gonna be up to council.
Can we go?
I, I agree, um, but there are ways to signal to council that um we strongly recommend it and that also there are consequences if we make this recommendation and you shoot it down. Because council has a lot of, uh, you know, a, a lot of priorities, there are a lot of people, there are a lot of voters who want different things. Um, but just remember that we do have some power as a body and we have to utilize that. And maybe we have to give our council some coverage. Do you, do you understand what I'm saying by council coverage? Because they're gonna take a lot of heat, it isn't gonna be an easy decision for them. Um, but they can say, oh, well, you know, if we don't do this, then we're really gonna have a problem with our planning commission and we need them to do development. So you guys have to also, you know, I, I understand that the tradition has been that we make recommendations, well, I mean, sometimes we're heard, sometimes we're not, but at some point, you gotta kinda make a stand. Um, and, and you have to show that you have more political power, you have to take it, you have to gain it. We have to gain it as a body and I've talked about how we are weak compared to other planning commissions, it's just the history and tradition of our city. Um, but if we wanna start changing things, we have to change the power dynamic.
No questions? Um, I think what you're suggesting, if there is development in these areas, it's more impactful than what I'm about to ask about, but I have some, two questions. One is, um, um, well, okay, so let's, since what you've just suggested is the high impact um scenario, in, in a way, if we wanna generate more tax revenue and we want to incentivize more development in these T zones so we can generate that tax revenue that goes to the, the fund and I guess, and which, which I'm supportive of. Um, and then I guess my question is, will, you know, will we get the development that we, we want? Like, you know, and, and this gets back to objectives, like if we want to spend more housing, do, you know, townhome developments over an acre to get the housing limits, we know we need two thousand more units for the next decade and we need to pay for affordable housing, that's our tax revenue. Uh, you know, that's sort of one question.
Well, doesn't changing incentives for development, right? Because it's not.
Well, it doesn't change the incentives for the developers. Do we, if, if we want to turbocharge or get started any kind of affordable housing funding by this um T-zone development, do we wanna really take another look at how we're incentivizing development here? Like, are we gonna get the, because we're, we're having, I, I was just putting this out there, like we need more housing, like we're gonna have anything over, um, I don't know, an acre, it's gonna be zone B one and is that gonna happen in these lots? I don't know, this, maybe this is just.
Let me ask you this, the city has a financial model that it uses on a lot of the new projects that come in just to estimate costs and revenue and so forth. Um, and that does try to build in additional uh public service costs, I mean, if you've got more people, you're gonna have more demands on the police department and, you know, all of that. This model tries to incorporate that, uh, and that gives you like a bump, you know, here's what's left over. Would something like that be acceptable or are you pretty well fastened to this notion of whatever increased value there is over what there, that it all goes to affordable housing? In which case you'd be asking other people in the city to subsidize those costs?
Absolutely, I mean, that's the only way we're gonna get affordable housing, I mean, that's, that's the, this is the whole point, like to get this, you gotta give something up. I know there are all these other costs when we do development, but along the way, in all of our development history, we have not taken on the cost of providing affordable housing, it's not in our operating budget, we don't have a housing authority. We, we don't do anything on the affordable housing front, really. Um, so it will feel a little painful at first, but every other municipality has been able to do development and has felt the pain over time by providing affordable housing, we have not. So it is gonna feel like, oh wow, like we got more people here and we don't have more money going to the school, how are we gonna do that? We'll be okay. We can do that, we will manage. Oh, we got more people going to the park and now we don't have any funds going from that specific site or that's a part of the city, but only three percent. Think about all the other revenue that is being generated all over the city by our one point five million dollar homes, right? By all of the development that we have on east and west broad, I mean, everything that we're doing is creating more money and more money and more money and yet we aren't allocating any money for affordable housing. So in this three percent, we will say, we're finally gonna do right by this region, by opening up more opportunities for affordable housing through stimulating some development. I mean, the other alternative is like do nothing and then just start going after the operating budget for affordable housing. I mean, but I think we're easing what is felt like the pain because we are stimulating development, we're taking this money out of growth and it's growth that we are making a decision on, right? This isn't the market, this is our decision, this is the town's decision, this is the council's decision, we are changing the zoning code. That is gonna hopefully stimulate the development and then we're changing our taxing code to trying to provide some affordable housing. So, I mean, I think I've made the argument pretty clear, uh, and no, I don't wanna give any of this money for any other purpose than affordable housing because we've never done right on this issue. Here's the opportunity on a small amount of parcels, I don't think it's a huge sacrifice.
I think, right, I also think in response to what we heard from the citizens, there's lots of comments that said they had problems with this, with the proposal, but if it was really for, if it was true for affordable housing, that it would be good, so I think it is responsive to that.
And I think this is yet another citywide issue, like compared to parking or stormwater, I do think it makes sense for this to shoulder that weight a little bit more to some of the land that is to kind of, we're gonna be spurring and to address, we start to address.
It's about money, and that's what, maybe zoning changes, but the reality is that we're not gonna get the housing that we're looking for unless we have money. Parkers don't want those, it's regulated.
So here, here was my much smaller scale question I was gonna ask and maybe it doesn't make sense because it's really a smaller scale, but you know, you were talking earlier Derek about the four stories in the T zones and like, we haven't sort of reflected, sort of all the commentary by, we haven't brought the height down, right? It's still high. Um, you know, I know in Arlington and other jurisdictions, they've got um bonus density, right? Like if you get this more affordable or more energy efficiency, you get more height. I mean, is that something to explore here? Like your maximum height is gonna be, uh, whatever, forty-five feet or thirty-five feet, but if you bring in, I don't know, more than ten percent, which I know ten percent already, like a higher number of affordable residential, then you can have your fifty feet. It's gonna be a lot.
Yeah, I mean, there's inclusionary zoning that's all over the country, I just don't think for this, it makes that much sense and we are pulling the money out by creating this T-zone development district and it's basically like what's on the books, what you see up there, how we're gonna change, that's what's bringing in the affordable housing money, so we don't need to like tinker with inclusionary zoning within this, yeah, yeah, no, no, no.
Would you propose what you're proposing uh in addition to what's there already with the uh workforce housing and the, you know, the percentages that are in there already?
No, I mean, I, well, I would say that we, the in lieu is in there, so like it, first when I thought about this, I thought about we should be getting additional tax dollars which should be subsidizing the affordable housing in the T zones themselves. I don't think that's necessary, I think what's necessary is getting greater amount of tax revenue to do affordable housing in other locations in the city. That, so it does, so affordable housing doesn't even, I don't think, need to be in the T zones.
Right, okay, I should clarify that.
Yeah, and, and, and then what I would keep is that we have that the money should be going allocated to our, or Affordable Housing Trust Fund, whatever you wanna call it. Um, but that, that money should be providing housing for people who are fifty percent and below area median income. Um, we have right now in this, um, you know, in the statute or whatever, that, there's two things, it's like fifty percent and below and then from, you know, eighty or whatever it is, hundred and twenty, I mean, we should just strike all that out, that's not what this is about and that was about when we were talking about providing affordable housing in the T zones. So let's just take all this out and just say that we're creating a tax district, um, the district will, resources that, you know, go above what the land value is now goes towards the Affordable Housing Fund and then that fund will be utilizing um the funds to build housing elsewhere in the city at fifty percent.
Obviously, you know, we can't do that through the zoning ordinance, I mean, the city council will need to do that through a separate action.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, and like I said, this is not something. Yeah, yeah, that's fine. And like I said, this is not something unusual. Like, all of our development deals have financing attached to it. We don't always see them. We don't always approve them, but now we are creating one to be approved in conjunction with this zoning ordinance that the city council will approve. We're making policy.
Would you say to remove the ten percent?
Right.
And they might, again, cash in lieu that's currently in?
Just keep the cash in lieu. I mean, or you could keep that. No, 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 yeah, you can strike, no, 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 we can strike, yeah. Am I not being clear? Because that should be clear.
That's, I get it. You want to, so you're trading units for, so no units. We're not getting any units?
For dedicated revenue stream.
Dedicated revenue stream.
Yes.
Yeah.
So all of that stuff can be taken out.
So are you not concerned about the units? Because I know we have units expiring. I know the fields, you know, is coming up.
I am concerned about that. That's what we'd be using this money for.
But like, who's building it? Who, where are we building them? What, where is that happening? Who's doing it? Like, I feel like the way that we get the units is when these projects are built. So I think, I totally agree with you that having the money is a good thing, and we can use it to buy more of the quads as they're available at Virginia Village. We've been doing that. I would also quibble a little bit with your claim that we're not doing much ever anything on affordable housing, because we've been doing a lot, a lot more than we used to in recent years.
Compared to other municipalities. Don't compare us to ourselves.
Compared to other jurisdictions. Compare us to ourselves.
It's like, we were really terrible there. Now we're not so terrible. Well, we are still terrible on the affordable housing front.
We're working. We do have, we do have the Amazon money. We have, we have money.
But we need to spend our own money.
And I agree with you. I think, I think affordable housing is a community responsibility, and it should be something that the entire community is contributing to. In that regard, I almost think like, you know, just putting it, resting it all only on T zones is kind of odd, because I think the whole community should be contributing, but I see your point that this is an opportunity to establish a precedent for a revenue stream. I just, my, my realistic brain is just like, well, that's really up to council, so I think we can make that recommendation. And you, I, I, I hear you on, you know, we can, we can just vote this whole thing down if they don't comply, right? That's the, that's the threat, but I think it's a good idea.
That, that's politics. I'm sorry. Like, this is, we are, we are political, we are a political entity. I mean, we bring our professional expertise, but to make things happen, you, you've got to use your leverage, and we have a lot of leverage. But I don't think we've used it. And now I'm asking us to use it for a priority that we haven't seen got, getting much attention. So.
Anything else on that topic? I was gonna try to get a way to have us be able to exit this meeting tonight. Well, we're at ten sixteen, so.
Yeah, I hear you, Tim. Go for it. Fifteen minutes, fifteen minutes. Let's stick to it.
Well, first of all, I mean, I didn't want to cut off the discussion on the housing. Is there any other comments that anyone has on that?
I just think keeping it as simple as it is. Tax increase, those development generators goes into affordable housing fund.
I mean, I think it's worth throwing it out there as, as an idea, you know, it has merit. It certainly, like, there's, there's, it might be there's a, for lack of a better word, a nexus between, you know, encouraging additional housing, but at the same time, trying to make up and trying to provide for a truly missing segment of housing, maybe not a, you know, physical type, but a, you know, from an economic, socioeconomic standpoint. So I'm, I'm okay with throwing it out there as part of our recommendations to council and saying that this is an opportunity to take a stand on that. I mean, you know, I don't know if I'm quite as far out as Derek is on, you know, all the points, but, but I think it's an idea that has some merit, and it's worth getting it out in the public consciousness and seeing if you can build, build that support, you know, behind it, from, you know, not just the seven of us, but, you know, from the broader community. So.
All right, let's see if there's any final comments, or Paul, if you have anything you want to say to us.
Yeah, so we do, I'm, I'm sort of, one, with my facilitator training, you never leave a meeting without sort of trying to repeat back what you heard. Because it's, you know, it's one thing for you all to have said it, but it's, it's an entirely different skill for me to have actually interpreted it correctly. So, so I do want to run through my notes just to see if I've got the right temperature, and obviously, we're gonna check the tape, but obviously, I want to say it now in case there's a, in case there was confusion. The, and hopefully, I'm signaling, I probably messed up here, so I am inviting comment on my notes. And then staff will use the direction from the planning commission tonight to prepare our presentation for the League of Women Voters Forum. I know we, we listed it as a Q and A, and we, we probably didn't say this enough, but many thanks to the League of Women Voters for, for hosting that forum. I'm always excited when I can, when I can partner with that organization. Just, anyway, it's a great organization, so.
Play soon and be able to.
Yeah, we, tentatively, we have a spot. I, I don't want to say it out loud and then be wrong, and everyone says, you said I did the wrong building, so. But we have one in the works, and, and obviously, we'll advertise that. The League will do their advertising. We'll, we'll, we'll echo that on our channels.
That's it, Thursday night?
Yeah, Thursday, February ninth. So let me run through my notes, and, and I do want to invite correction here. These, these aren't following importance. It's, I'm trying to follow the order on the notes and, and sort of semi the order of the conversation. So going to purpose, it sounded like there was consolidation around the importance of providing more housing options within the city and looking to improve properties that were sort of underdeveloped within the T zones.
Yeah, those were the council's goals and objectives.
All right, doing good. In terms of comp plan guidance, there was discussion on that, and so I, I do think we want to at least document what is there in terms of the comp plan. We talked about, and I actually found out there is language in the vision statement about a commitment to a growing community. Still in the vision chapter, it talks about the importance of housing diversity as, as an element of social inclusion. And then within the housing chapter, there are references to expanding housing options and housing types. And then the small area plans, which are not formally adopted into the comp plan, but our policy guidance do provide development guides and scale guides for development of the T zones throughout the city. In terms, and I'm lumping a couple conversations here, I probably could have done this differently, but use cases and uses. And there were a couple things that came up here. One is that through the special use permit process, there are conditions that can be attached to specific uses if they, if there is a concern about potential impacts on neighbors or the neighborhood. There was an interest in removing parking lots as a by right principal use. There was an interest in adding quads as a by right residential use.
Yes.
And then there was an action for staff to research with the zoning administrator, what is clinic for human care and what is a residential institution?
Yeah, a definition. And on the quads, triplex, quads, I don't, I don't know how, how, I don't know what the cutoff, the size should be of a unit size.
And related to, you know, the largest size that you can build in a residential zone. In other words, if you come up with a structure that's no bigger than the largest you can do in a residential zone that is residential for T-zone, then you would have a by right.
Yeah, so that would introduce the thirty-five percent lot coverage and then the thirty-five feet to the midline for the roof.
Although you may have had something even larger than that.
No, I think that's right. That's right.
Okay.
So it would be house sized, which I guess, you know, it would have more units, because I know in the staff recommendation, you all advised removing both single family and duplex, because that intensity of use is less than what you can achieve with smaller condos, but would a triplex or quad, like, does that, do you think fit with the spirit of, of bringing some? Or do we think that fits with the spirit of bringing some denser housing to these areas?
As well as a by right that's residential?
As well as what?
As a by right, it would be a by right.
Yeah, as a by right, yeah.
So even though you're taking away.
You can do something that's the same sort of form, but slightly denser.
Right, and that forces lower priced units presumably?
That's the idea.
Quads, triplexes, by right?
I, I, I'm, I have an open question on whether triplexes should be. Yes.
Up to the maximum and the everything else, or?
No.
Limits of what? A residential building?
Residential, got it.
Yeah. So that would be by right.
Think of a McMansion.
It would just be a.
If you could do it, if you can do a tri or a quad.
A multi-unit McMansion.
It's no bigger than a McMansion, and get a by right.
There's some really nice examples of buildings like that.
Okay, let's see, stormwater, setting a, adding a cap on impervious surface of eighty percent. Parking, that went back and forth, but I, I, I think I heard more people saying, keep the one space per unit. Okay.
Can we add a provision, the council looks at parking, comprehensive parking, it's been mentioned, but I don't know if it's.
It's on the work plan, yeah, right? Where?
A nudge.
Well, I'm a believer in the work plan, so I, I, I carry a copy around and I tell other planners they have to do it. I like the work plan. It gives me direction. The scale, I think, I, there was a lot of topic, conversation about that, but what, what I heard is sort of the, the only definite was adding the step back on all the street frontages.
I, I didn't, I, I think, I don't know that I heard that. I think it was, so right now, the step back is only if there's a residential district across the street or immediately abutting, right? Do we want it on all street frontages? It might make sense from a pedestrian point of view, yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
At least on park avenue, I don't know about that.
Yeah. So yes.
Were we okay with fifty feet, or did we want something lower than that?
I think it allows, it allows an extra five feet higher than what you can do today. It allows an extra story, which would permit more units in a small residential building, which I think is a good thing, because we need the housing, so that's how I think about it.
Well, it's fifty feet, but it's ten feet further back on the street frontages, and it's twenty feet further back on the rear yard.
On the rear, yeah, with those setbacks. Yeah, I felt like we.
Well, no, so you've always got the twenty foot, so, so this introduces a twenty foot setback where in some cases, you have no setback requirement in the rear yard today. And so there are cases today where you can build forty-five feet right on the lot line, and so this would be saying, yes, you can go up to fifty feet, but you gotta be twenty feet off the rear lot. And yes, you can go up to fifty feet instead of forty-five on the front, but you've gotta be, that fifty feet comes in ten feet further back. I'll write it up, and everyone can change it on. Let's see, HCC, we've got an action follow-up with Ron Anzalone.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Really, I, I still think we do have, I mean, I think we're all that would like to go. Zones is residential, it's still residential. But we still have by rights, a lot of by rights. We're extending the by right commercial that you know in. And is that attractive over in North Washington? And do we want that to happen without, especially use permits process?
Well, so let me flip this over to the chair. We are at close to ten thirty, so I would suggest a motion to, to continue.
I think we're gonna have to go a few minutes if we're gonna finish your list here, so if somebody would like to.
I'll move that we extend the meeting till ten forty-five. Always end early. Aye.
So, well, let's come back to uses, because I think I can, I, I think I've got the others right. So let me come back to uses. On review process, we walked that through, and I thought there was a lot of sort of questions around public engagement and, and just sort of discussion of the boards that goes through, but I didn't.
For clarification.
There was staff report on the, the board, but I think we sort of nitpicked the, the staff report. I don't think there was. Lot size, I think we talked about the one acre and why one acre and what that limit was. I didn't hear any direction coming out of that. I just want to acknowledge it happened.
Are we still saying that there's no residential under, oh, so we are saying that if it's over an acre, it goes to?
Special exception.
Does that work for one and a half acre, two acres? Is that, is that, I don't know if that's the right answer.
Well, that's his question.
Well, I think the only place that size exists sort of consolidated today is along North Washington. And so that's, we did pick the one acre. It happens to be a round number, but it also happens to fit the, the size of the sort of blocks of parcels along South Washington, Roosevelt, at Park Avenue, that it's, it's a good fit for the, the possible assemblages.
Which ties into the future land use map too, by the way.
And the North Washington small area.
Let's see, Park Avenue and North Washington, there was, there was direction for staff to make better language for North Washington.
Explain that.
The residential use restriction.
Yeah, I didn't, I, there was discussion about Park Avenue, but I didn't hear any direction to, to change anything within the proposal for Park Avenue.
You were the one.
I think, I mean, I, I don't know the right way to do it, but I mean, I think we've tried, I guess, in a roundabout way, we've made some distinctions, but, I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, my view is we should be encouraging residential on, on that, that stretch.
See, that's why I was hoping the S U P process would allow for that, but I wasn't clear from your answer.
I mean, I don't, I don't think that we should, I don't, I don't think that it'd be compatible with too much commercial there. I know, and we tried that, and it's no, no one, you know, there's no market to build that there.
Market won't build it, right?
But then why we, why include it? If we want to, we want something, we should make it clear what we want to see there. I don't know. I mean.
North side's doing pretty well.
But that's across the street, not, that's not across the street from single family detached.
The street bump should be different, Ray Paul, should it be Columbia, to get to your point?
Oh, well, I was trying to.
Well, again, I mean, you know, we're talking about like a few, like two blocks, and we know exactly where they are and what's there, and so if you're asking me what I think should be on those two blocks, I think it should be residential. That's just my view, on those two blocks. Am I talking about the whole T-zone world? Talking about those two blocks?
Could we write something into our recommendation that's.
Well, there are some existing commercial uses that are functioning there today in terms of sort of the professional offices.
Right, those low-scale offices. I mean, those can stay. Yeah, those, those are allowed, permitted to stay unless they, or, you know, but I'm thinking for redevelopment, I mean, I might, I wouldn't be in favor of more intense, you know, commercial development on those blocks.
I'm not opposed to having possibility of something else to do. Bookstore next door or. You know, if they have a real work on a space, they sell whatever they're making, and then they go to that. I'm not opposed to excluding that option or something once.
I mean, if we wanted to include like something that like recognizes like the scale of like the type of commercial that's there today, like professional office or.
Or small craft.
Office. Right now, I guess there are office uses over there, right? I mean, typically, there, there's no, you know.
Oh, is there a real estate office there?
Right, law office. I mean, there are professional office type uses. I mean, I'm okay with that. Once you get into retail, I don't know.
I think it's how like what's supposed to be in the neighborhood, not like your box retail store.
I didn't say box retail. I just said, I said retail.
It's not average, cheap, you can get from our location to the next one, it's more neighborhood office.
I'm just, I'm just one person. That's, that's my view, but.
I don't know if there's some way in that we can put some languages that we encourage mainly residential development on Park Avenue. And I don't know that we're at a point where we've got code that would do that.
Right. We'll, we'll take a look at that. So what I'm hearing from the group is to, to explore how to write up some code to store, to steer redevelopment toward residential, I guess, on those couple blocks of Park Avenue. Okay, and then on affordable housing, a request to, to take out what's there today in terms of the ten percent sort of units or cash in lieu and definitions of, of AMI. And instead, replace that with a recommendation for a separate mechanism that would allow for a commitment of the, the delta in the property taxes to, to be earmarked into the Affordable Housing Fund. Fifty percent.
About to produce housing, have fifty percent.
So the fund would be specifically earmarked for that, is what you're saying? So the fund would be specifically earmarked for that, is what you're saying? Yeah.
Right, so it's not a recommendation to stick it in the Affordable Housing Fund, it's a commitment to use it for fifty percent AMI.
Affordable housing fund.
And for that purpose, do both.
Yes.
Got it.
So you'd have to, you'd have to create an account and, uh, keep it separate.
Well, do it on a spreadsheet.
Didn't say how to do it, I just.
Right. No, it doesn't have to be sort of like a separate account, like, there's.
It's earmarked.
Yeah. The, um, there'd be a legal requirement to spend it that way and obviously, we keep track of it. Um, and then coming back to uses.
Um, you know, feel free each, like, I'll try to, kind of talk about that a little bit. But, but I, I still, like, if, if we know we need more housing. And, um, you know, looking at the list of properties, like, just as an example, I, I, I'm still questioning, are we making it harder to generate housing than we are to generate commercial? So that fall's property is one point one nine acres. That could by right, it could just be upgraded, it's already office, or they can tear down and go, hi, I don't know how high that, I don't know what's there, honestly. But that one point one nine acre lot, it's gonna be easier to turn that to a fall commercial setting. You could say the market conditions won't lead to that. Um, but we're, I think, making it harder for that to be residential because it's over the one acre residential, and I don't know if this is the case. And I, I just, like, I don't know why, I guess I'm saying, I don't know why, why limit residential to one acre in the T-zones? If there's an opportunity to have more than one acre.
You can do residential either, it's just a matter of which process.
Yeah, it just gets, still has to go through this, but, but it'll go through the special section.
It's recognizing that, like, I think the logic is that if it's a larger site, you know, it deserves, it requires a little more scrutiny, you know, and should go through a more robust public process. Um, cause it's a larger piece of property and.
Do we think that one acre is that?
Plus, you don't want people that, uh, you know, would, would try to enrun the special exception process by taking advantage of a two liberal T-zone.
Yeah, I mean, whether one acre is the right number or not, I don't know.
Yeah, it's hard to say.
Um, you know, as Paul said, it's a round number, it's somewhat consistent with like, you know, the, the type of lots that are out there, but, you know, I don't, I don't know. But it's probably in the ballpark, but, you know, without, you know, really crunching what, what existing lot size is and what could easily consolidate, um.
But, I kinda looked at this, you know, we're gonna, we had a zoning code for T-zone for a long time. All right, we can make some changes. Let's see what happens. You know, after five years, the planning commission at that time, council, didn't work, we need to go back and make some more changes. So I kinda looked at it that way. On the other hand, if you try to make big changes all at once upfront, then, then, you know, you can't recover from those mistakes nearly as easily, I don't think, as if you go incrementally.
If nobody else is worried about this one, I stand down.
That's, so that's my, that's my summary. Um, uh, did I miss anything?
The thing I had was a, a, encouraging the green infrastructure plan and floor water. I don't know, just.
Yes. A statement that it's hard to, you don't have to wipe policies on these guys. And, and, and we, we had to note about the confidence in that, we're noting that it's hard.
All right.
Are we done?
So, is that possible? Cause that's like the, I don't know what's possible, I still don't know.
Sure.
We are done.